For December fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen is called to order. The first item, actually before we get to that, are there any public comments for items not on the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move ahead. The first item on our agenda is the re-adoption of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, request for continuance, planning file LE-1503. We have a report from the staff.
Thank you Chair Kidwell. At the last hearing on the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, there were several questions that were brought up during that hearing. Staff did not have sufficient time to complete responses to those, so we are requesting a continuance of the public hearing to January eleventh, two thousand and sixteen. We did receive written testimony from Ms. Kozinski regarding the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan adoption that was entered or provided tonight, so we will enter that into the record as Exhibit A, and we'll make sure that's in the packet for the next time that you receive it on January eleventh. We would recommend that you take public testimony from anyone in the audience tonight who wishes to speak and then continue the hearing.
Mr. Conkle, will that give me some additional time to meet with the delightful and wonderful Mr. Walter and go over the suggested clarifications that I have?
I would assume so.
Okay, I'll make it so.
And do we have a staff report?
I think that was it.
We were not going to present anything additional tonight.
So we'll just be taking public testimony.
Correct.
And I don't have any cards for people that wish to testify. If anybody would like to testify, we'll take testimony on the Beaver Creek Concept Plan at this time.
They're all rushing up.
I see that. Not all at once, please.
Would you like me to make a motion?
I would entertain a motion.
I would like to move that we continue the review of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, file LE-1503, and we're continuing that till?
January eleventh.
Oh, isn't that date already full?
It is.
I second it.
Okay.
All right. Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinckin?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner McGiff?
Aye.
Commissioner Guile?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Will it get the next two done that fast, we'll all be home in time for final jeopardy.
We're on a roll.
... concert tonight at ten o'clock.
We'll keep the momentum going here. The next item on the agenda is the Cove Phase One, CP-15-01, Concept Master Plan Amendment, DP-15-01, Detailed Development Plan, NR-15-01.
Zero five.
Zero five, Natural Resources Overlay District Review, and US-15-06, Geological Hazard Overlay District Review. And I have a script that I'll read here if I can just dig it out. So regarding this land use action, this public hearing on the land use application that is scheduled tonight, a staff report has been prepared for this application and been made available to the public seven days before the public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to this applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure will be as the steps on the chart indicate. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their card is received. You will find, if you'll fill out your address on the card, the city will notify you of its final decision. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name, and testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person may submit any written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, oversized poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to the city staff while the record is open. If they are not given to staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence or testimony or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the consideration of the city commission or Luba or both. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes action for damages in circuit court. We will now open the record for the city files that I've just read. Does any commissioner have any ex parte contacts, conflicts, or bias, or any other statement to declare? Has any commissioner visited the site since our last meeting?
Not I.
Nothing. I have not had any ex parte contacts, but I have been around and in the site probably for over twenty-five years, and I was just by the site yesterday afternoon.
Pretty much the same thing Denise said. I'm familiar with the site. I drive the Main Street Extension all the time, so I know where we're at.
Properly?
I'm familiar with the site, yeah.
Familiar with the site, no ex parte contacts.
I don't have any ex parte contacts either. I use the Cove on all sorts of ways, in all sorts of ways to recreate.
I have no ex parte contacts to declare. I am familiar with the site, but I have not visited there recently. Does the audience have any questions for the commissioners on these declarations? Seeing none, we will proceed. We have a staff report.
Thank you very much. Laura Turway, I'm a planner with the city. The city received an application for development of the Cove site. As you can see on the screen, it's generally located adjacent to Clackamas Cove and surrounded by Main Street and Highway ninety-nine E. The property involves the entire Cove master plan, which was originally approved in two thousand and eight and subsequently amended in two thousand and nine. With the original approval, there was a subdivision that was approved. There were lots that were separated out. This is a screenshot of the site. The primary purpose of the application tonight is to construct multifamily dwelling units on Lot Two, so you'll hear a lot of references to Lot Two. It's a site directly adjacent to the Oregon City Shopping Center. It's bounded by Main Street on three sides. This application has been reviewed by the Urban Renewal Agency of Oregon City, and I just wanted to touch on the differences between the land use review and urban renewal review. There's no connection between the two. You're not bound by any urban renewal decisions. We are looking at this application to see if it complies with the previously approved master plans as well as the current standards within the Oregon City Municipal Code. Are there any questions? So urban renewal may be looking at other phases or different projects, and we are just sort of separating that out and only considering what's before us with the proposal that's at hand.
Well, they're not a quasi-judicial body of any sort, so they don't.
Right.
They can give us their recommendation, and we can take that into consideration.
Exactly.
Do we have a recommendation from them?
Nope.
Okay, then I guess we won't take it into consideration then.
They're not required by law to give us one, are they?
No, they're not.
But they could.
All right, so in two thousand and eight, again, was the original approval of the Cove. It involved a wide variety of property. A lot of the property, in the original approval, all of the property was owned by the Urban Renewal Agency of Oregon City. Since then, in two thousand and nine, the master plan was amended to bring in the parking lot, which is sort of the black and white drawing at the bottom of the screen, which is on Tri-City's property. And also, since then, Lot Two has been sold, and that's where this development has come in, to build multifamily dwellings on Lot Two, so there is no city ownership of Lot Two at this time. The applicant would like to take the approved master plan and essentially make some minor amendments and tweaks, but implement Phase One. And we'll go through what the proposed changes are and what those phases are, but the overall big picture of the master plan primarily is going untouched, or the applicant is not proposing to amendment, city is not proposing to amend it. A lot of it has sort of already been approved. It includes a variety of uses on site. There are some public amenities. There is a trail, the Clackamas River Trail, that goes from Main Street all along to this North Park area. Let me see if I can use this. There we go. So there's a North Park, which in the, we'll get to it, but in the proposed amendment would be constructed under Phase Two. There's a little trail that goes out between the Clackamas River and the Clackamette Cove as well. There is an amendment to do a public parking lot, and there are other city amenities and marinas that are a part of the already approved master plan. So now I just want to give you a brief description of what they are proposing with their master plan amendment.
Will those be easements or dedications, those public facilities?
They're in tracks. So the Clackamette River, let me go back to the subdivision. So you can see in the subdivision, there's Track C that goes between the water and the properties, and that is generally where the Clackamette River Trail is located. Track D, on the northernmost portion of the site up here, is where the public park is located. So for the most part, a lot of the public amenities are located on tracks. Track A, which we'll get to in a minute, is also proposed to be a parking lot for the trailhead, and that is on its own separate property. So for the most part.
Is Track C right there below where I see Lot Seven, Lot Six, Lot Four, blah blah? Okay, the little, okay, it's just hard to, yeah, okay, see it, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
The water hole?
The applicant proposed a variety of amendments, but in general, they're all relatively minor to this big concept plan that's already been approved. In general, they are to implement Phase One. The First Amendment is a permanent trailhead parking lot facility, and in the original approval, that is meant to be a monument site, so some type of signage and stormwater facility as well. In addition, they've proposed to increase the number of dwelling units on Lot Two from two hundred and twenty to two hundred and forty-four, and add five thousand five hundred square feet of office and a thousand square feet of office or restaurant. So the total would be sixty-five hundred square feet, and again, a thousand of it could go either way between office or restaurant. They propose to add a temporary trailhead parking lot during Phase One, so Phase One, we'll talk about in just a moment, but is really just the implementation of the two hundred and forty-four dwelling units. They propose to increase the number of dwelling units along the waterfront from a hundred and eighty to a hundred and ninety-five, and they propose to amend some of the street designs. So in the two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine master plans, it specifies what the streets will look like when they're built, and there's some minor amendments to those as well. In addition, they propose some adjustments from the code, which are identified in the staff report, and an amended phasing plan. So I want to talk about the phasing plan a bit. This is the approved phasing plan. So as you can tell, it goes until two thousand and nineteen, and it started in two thousand and ten, and as you may know from visiting the site, it hasn't really been implemented to this point. So the original phasing plan had implementation of the street improvements in Phase One, so all of that green is mass grading and construction of the street system. So there's a larger number of phases spread out over a longer period of time. The applicant has proposed to amend the phasing plan. Actually, also while we're on this, this gives you a good description of what goes where as far as the square footages of office and restaurants that are in the approved master plan. So in general, it's dwelling units on Lot Two, and then the square foot office, it's referred to as the mixed-use building, so it's primarily office, and then there's also some restaurants that could either go here or could go in between all of the dwelling units on the waterfront as well. There's a marina, a transient dock, which is a dock where you don't keep your boat for very long, right?
Right.
Day use kind of thing. And then there's also a canoe and kayak dock and this North Park as well. So they propose to amend the phasing plan, and you can see the implementation is pretty quick. So Phase One is in two thousand and fifteen, which includes what we're reviewing tonight, includes some grading up here and here, the temporary trailhead parking lot here, and the construction of the dwelling units on Lot Two. Phase Two is a lot larger than it was in the previous master plan. It includes grading of all of this, construction of a portion of street improvements identified in yellow, and construction of all those dwelling units all in one phase. Phase Three looks at the implementation of the parking lot on the Tri-City's property as well as the commercial between the dwelling units here. Phase Four is this mixed-use building, and Phase Five is the in-water work. And to talk about the public improvements associated with the phasing, we have Wendy Marshall, our Development Projects Manager.
Hi, Wendy Marshall, Development Projects Manager for the city. Just as a summary, what we have here is the sidewalk and street plan. I know there's a lot of business on there. Basically, we have the streets in yellow here, and then we've got the sidewalks in green and pink. So basically, for Phase One, they're building everything on this lot. We have an emergency access through the shopping center. The easement is already in place, and they are going to make a connection, but it will just be emergency vehicles. There is another access here. That's for the future. That will not be constructed at this time, but they are providing an easement, and there is an existing easement that's already been recorded that goes through the shopping center. Now for the road, they're going to complete all of Main Street, the roundabout, Main Street, all the way up, basically around the whole site. They're going to complete that with Phase One. The sidewalks are in pink, and they're, what they proposed was, some of it was unclear and some of them, there was just minor details really about when the sidewalk would be constructed, but basically sidewalk on both sides around here where the pink is. We show a couple of crossings, and then the sidewalk in pink and a sidewalk that will connect all of these units along this street, since we do have Clackamette Park up here, and then we have the trailhead parking will be here, so we felt a connection would be required for pedestrians in that direction. And then for Phase Two, they're going to complete Agnes all the way down here, and this portion of Agnes will, at this time, just be a half-street. Basically, ODOT had decided they did not want a vehicular connection up here to Washington, but we feel that that might be a temporary condition, so this will be a half-street. So it'll be twenty feet of pavement and a sidewalk and the typical street trees and everything. We'll have bollards, so it'll just be for emergency vehicles, pedestrians, bicycles. And then in some future undefined phase, they may complete the remainder of that half-street to a local street section. Phase Two, once again, sidewalks, we're only, and this was decided a long time ago, that only one side sidewalk would be needed here because the esplanade would be the other direction. And then we've also shown the unaffected by any of these changes, there's the trail loop here. Little portion of the sidewalk to be completed with Phase Two, and then the rest will go in, in the frontage with the office building in Phase Four.
So in the scheme of the master plan, there is...
I'm sorry, there's a huge thing that's not indicated here for phasing, and that's the, mass grading will be covered over the entire site for Phase One, and we'll talk about that later.
For the master plan, the applicant had proposed, rather than implement all of the street improvements up front, which was in the previous approvals, to separate them out into different phases. And what Wendy had described is a condition of approval for this pink line for the pedestrian connection to connect up to McLaughlin Boulevard, because the thought process is they're putting a large pedestrian generator with Phase One, so then this sidewalk would be available to get people safely up to transit streets and commercial and things like that. So that's why there's a condition of approval for, on the staff report, that's recommended to implement that sidewalk at this time. Are there any questions about the master plan, where we've been, what they're changing?
Questions from the commission?
I was looking for the street cross-sections.
We can get those for you. So we separated out into the master plan and then the detailed development plan. I can show you the street sections.
Yeah, I just, I had that at home, and I didn't see them.
It looked like you were arranging anywhere between six and ten feet wide for sidewalks in the cross-sections.
Wendy can describe them for you.
Yeah, we can provide them, but basically, everything's two travel lanes for the streets. And then for the sidewalks around the roundabout, it'll be ten-foot-wide sidewalks because you don't want bike lanes in a roundabout. Over here on Main Street, six-foot, everything's six-foot along here. The esplanade, I believe, is about twenty feet wide, so that's going to be a shared use for pedestrians, bikes, and anything non-motorized. And this section here on the, on this side of Main Street is eight feet, and that was to, I believe, and I wasn't here, account for the fact that part of it was eliminated on the other side. And then the planner strips are variable width, and some of them have rain gardens or water quality swells where the planner strip would be, as well as street trees.
And is there a rationale for eliminating it in that area, in that gap area there? What's the reason?
That was pre-approved, and I am honestly not that clear on why that was removed.
I think that's where the retaining wall is that we talked about earlier.
Right.
There was some discussion when we were negotiating and looking at the street section from Main Street, with the amount of fill that's going in on the Glacier site and the amount of, you know, the differentiation in the grade there, there was a discussion about should we try to get folks onto the esplanade trail, make it a little bit wider, when we had those discussions.
Other questions from the staff?
On the esplanade trail, I just recently attended the final planning session for the Renewal Creek Canyon, and one of the things that was made very clear at that meeting was that the, there was going to be a separation of particular uses. Now, I'm not suggesting that happened here, but will there be clear delineations such as, you know, bikes on this side, hikers on that side, because we all know that there tend to be conflicts with people who are walking and people who are wanting to go really fast on their bicycles. Not that they're dangerous, but, you know, we just want to make sure that people aren't, it's a shared-use path, but there needs to be some delineation of, you know, all the bikes on the left side and all the people on the right side, whatever.
The design of the path over the long run has been in the approved master plan. The applicant's not proposing to change it. I don't think it specified, it didn't get to that specificity of paint of this side is dedicated to this use or the other. There is the width and the pavement material identified, so we know it's going to be twenty feet, and we know the material it's going to be as well.
Can you just make a note about that? Because that, we encountered the same sort of issues when we were planning the East Bank Park esplanade, and there is a, it's a shared-use path, but there's clear delineation on who goes where.
That is a good point, and the construction of that permanent facility will be done in Phase Two, so they can, it's good for them to hear.
I do know that some of the discussion that happened in two thousand and eight was that the promenade was going to be wide enough to have, like, maybe a car show where the cars would be lined up, or some sort of, like, fair with, you know, like, maybe the antique fair would move there or something, so it'd be a long, there'd be tents set up there. So I don't think we want to go with, like, a permanent hallways to the left or always to the right, but I don't know what, when we get a little closer, but I think some of those were, were some good ideas to draw people down to the Cove and bring them in, because I know all the car shows bring people in from hundreds of miles, so.
Yeah, that'd be great to have a pedestrian accessway of that width.
Yes.
And I think if we're going to dwell on the, you know, the zones for different types of uses, I'd rather see, instead of painted lines, I'd rather see changes in types of material that denote the zones that people would go to.
You know, as we work through this, there's also that opportunity, you know, there's a big difference between a recreational and a commuter. You do have the ability to use Agnes Street coming, you know, off of, you know, let's say you come across the Eighty-Second Bridge, you're on Washington Street Extension, you kind of turn right onto Agnes where the tri, where the old pedestrian bridge.
Bridge used to be right.
That crosses into Gladstone.
In Gladstone, okay.
You could see yourself using a commuter-bike route, would be going in front of Tri-City down Agnes, tying into Agnes Avenue on the, on this property over to Main Street Extension as your commuter route, and try to avoid using, so I mean, there are options here, is I guess, all I'm saying that we can look at when we're doing this.
Yeah, I just was not suggesting we make a change now, but just make a note of that, that we need to be thinking about that down the road.
Yeah.
Make the promenade out of old Roman cobblestones, bikers just wanted to write on it.
I mean, I can also, I could also see a lot of events happening down here, like triathlons and other kinds of, and I'm just hoping that there is areas set aside, I didn't really see it very clearly, areas set aside for gathering spaces large enough to stage those kinds of events and things that make that area vibrant.
The North Park, which will be implemented in Phase Two, is a great space for that. It'll be a large, sort of carved-out bowl for gathering spaces and public events.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Just one, that increase of fifteen living units, that doesn't affect anything zoning-wise, is there a variance of any kind?
That's a good question. So we don't have any density requirements in mixed-use downtown, so basically, if you comply with your parking and height and setbacks and that kind of thing, you could put as many dwelling units as you want in whatever space is left over. So the applicant is increasing the dwelling units in two places, one on Lot Two from two twenty to two forty-four, and then the one along the Cove from one eighty to one ninety-five. With that, they did do a transportation study, and that transportation study was reviewed by John Riplinger of Riplinger and Associates, our city consultant as well, and he's here to answer any questions regarding transportation. But, yeah, they did the study. Zoning-wise, it's allowed.
Okay, then I've got one more. How much fill is being placed? And I thought I saw an elevation change in certain areas of, upwards of twenty feet near from Agnes. Is that, was I looking at that right, or was there?
It's a good segue. So now to talk about the detailed development plan, Wendy Marshall again to talk about the earthwork.
Before you segue to that, then, can we go back a couple, the slide with the, one more. There. You have two areas that are not identified in a phase.
That's true. That's true.
So, does that mean, oh, we'll get to them at the end, and, ah, we're just, you know, it's 2095, and we just still haven't got to that phase yet?
The value engineering.
Yeah. Or is there some point where they'll be, you know, completed before phase four begins, or something like that?
So they are, the applicant gave us a revised phasing plan for this, and it just didn't specify those, and so there's a condition of approval that it specify which phase that those be implemented in. A lot of them are really just planting in those two sites, there's not really a lot of use. There's a bark-chip pathway that goes along the spit between the Clackamas River and the Clackamette Cove, but in both areas, there's primarily planting, so there's no active use there. So there is a condition of approval for that, to assign it to a phase.
Which one I was looking for, I didn't...
10, 12, something like that?
There's like 9,000 of them, so I just...
We like to be thorough.
Don't exaggerate. So we're 900.
I will...
I think there were 900.
900. I counted.
Tens talks about the N-Rod and everything, so.
I'll let Wendy speak while I find, and then I'll get to your answer.
Okay, thanks.
I actually have one more question that doesn't have anything to do with Wendy. Give you some more time there, breathing room there. Just as a, something that I noted on the landscape plans, is that what I am, what I was hoping to see is that we were going to have some variation in plant materials that were more in keeping with, you know, native vegetation down there by the artificially-created facility, and that I really hope we don't have the trees marching down the street in the soldier pattern that we generally see all the time, because that really gets boring, and then it just looks like every other place. So I was hoping there was going to be a little more, have trees, but a little more flexibility, you know, so that they're not all in a soldier line, that maybe there's some here and there's some there, or there might be groupings, just so...
You mean a grove or a stand?
Yes, possibly, possibly, yes.
And your concern is regarding the street trees or the onsite trees?
All of the above.
There are conditions of approval associated with landscaping. I'll show you the landscape.
And maybe the applicant would like to address that comment.
You know, Denise is a Marine, I wonder what's wrong with a straight line in uniformity?
Exactly. We do not want to get into...
There's something to be said about that.
We do not, Mr. Mahoney, we do not want to get into discussions about the military, because whatever it is, I'm going to have you beat on that issue, so, just to warn you.
Thank you, Robert.
So there, as you know, this code is subject to compliance with our landscaping standards under our current code, based on what the applicant has chosen. So as far as street trees, our code requires one tree every 35 feet, there's a condition of approval associated with that. For onsite landscaping, there are places in which we require landscaping, places in which we don't. We require landscaping between a parking lot in a building, a parking lot in the street, and then just a general number of landscaping. And those buffers between parking lots and stuff, we require one tree every 35 feet, so there are place, there is an average, so, in generally, they kind of will be lined in that sense. There are places where we don't require landscaping, the applicant has proposed landscaping, so more specifically adjacent to the buildings that are fronting Main Street and Main Street. So this picture is hard to tell, and it, actually, it's kind of good that it's hard to tell, because there's a lot of plants there, and that's why, it's hard to re... So they do have proposed, they had a landscape architect conduct a study or a plan for the plantings. It was reviewed in compliance with our code, and with the conditions of approval, it can meet our code. So there are no nuisance plants, and then...
Oh, yes, there are. They have juniper on here.
So Oregon City's adopted a nuisance list?
Yes, I know, but I consider juniper to be a nuisance, and they're not native to this part of the country, and, ugh!
So we, staff did review the plans, the plantings, and the species were not identified on the Oregon City nuisance list, and then they have a landscape architect sign off on it as well, to assure...
I will concur with Denise, junipers are a nuisance plant.
Just for the audience, I do not like juniper, and do not like seeing it planted, because it's not...
I support that motion.
Not native to this area, and it's just, they get ugly later on, so. But I did notice that they did plant a lot of, there's salmonberry, there's red alder, white oak, those are things that are native to this particular area. I'm not sure about a star magnolia, but Oregon grape is really good.
Yeah, so the requirement is not that it's native, it's just that it's not nuisance and a landscape architect signs off on it.
Take the juniper out.
So, we can make a note to look at our nuisance list.
Yes, but they could take that out, too.
They can't change, move the goalposts.
There is no goalposts for junipers.
Do we have more staff presentation?
We have a lot more staff presentations.
Okay, Wendy. Go for it, Wendy.
Let's get it done.
Okay, moving on to grading with phase one. Basically, they're in the floodplain, so they have to, they can't fill into the floodplain any more than they take out. So basically, the floodplain holds a certain volume of water, and they can't fill it up, that volume has to remain available for floods. So, there are two parts of their grading. For phase one, they're going to be touching the whole site, basically. So they have to balance their cut and fill in the floodplain, and they can't add more. And they also need to fill in Lot 2 so that the homes are above the floodplain. So, basically, their grading plan is they're going to scoop some out here from the North Park, they're just scoop out, I can't read that far, so I'm going to look here, 101,000 cubic yards. They're going to scoop out, there's an existing stockpile at Tri-City, now that has to be removed, and that's not in the calculation for floodplain, because it shouldn't have been there. So they're going to, they're going to use, like, 42,000 cubic yards, but they still have to remove all that, and that's 58,000. Thanks, you can see better than I can. And then for, from Lot 1, they're going to take out 4,000 cubic yards. Then they're going to, in Lot 2, they have to do some cuts, but most of it's fill, so they're going to cut 23,000 cubic yards out of the apartment site and fill in 125,000 cubic yards. So basically, just to get the magnitude, in the amphitheater area, there, and that's something in the grading plan you can look at, we have paper copies of the, they have cross-sections through the site, so you can see what it is. They're going to cut up to 28 feet in height. The stockpile is up to 34 feet, but like I said, that was just a stockpile. In Lot 1, it's up to 8 feet of cut, and in the subject site for the apartments, they're going to cut up to 13 feet, but fill up to 26 feet. And all that has to occur with phase one, so they can build up the site for the apartments.
So all of the mass grading will happen during phase one?
Correct.
Only for the portions identified, there's other grading that will occur later along the waterfront.
Do you guys have a slide of where the floodplain actually is, by any chance?
Base flood elevation is 50.7.
I mean, it just, I mean, I know that there's, there should be some kind of a contour interval or something that shows where that is.
We don't have one, but we can get one for you.
I just, I just want to see what's in and what's out, and get an idea of what that is.
Do you remember those old FEMA maps, Paul?
Yeah.
That we used to have in the office.
And are you guys using, are you guys using the 96 floodlines as DADMs, or are you guys going to use the old, the FEMA benchmark?
So our code requires us to look at both, and use the stricter of the two, which is 96, which is 50.7, and the 100-year flood mark is higher than 50.7, so in 1996, the floodwaters got higher than 100 years, so we use that to figure out our base flood elevation. Their calculations for capacity and flood management overlay district is identified above there. There are some conditions of approval associated with it, to make sure that, here's the calculation, here's the calculation, and that that calculation stays true and correct through the project, so we have benchmarks to go back and check on it, and make sure it stays that way. So, the calculation shows that at the end of the day, the amount of soil they're putting into the floodplain will be equally removed, so the water level will not rise or change adjacent properties.
Okay.
So they are doing some work in our natural resource overlay district. The natural resource overlay district is a buffer, it's a vegetated corridor that protects natural features and habitat and wildlife. They are not doing that much work in this phase, there's later phases that will include additional work. In this particular phase, they're not doing any in-water work, they're not working below the ordinarily-high water mark. They're proposing to impact approximately 31,000 square feet of the vegetated corridor, or about three-quarters of an acre. Their mitigation required in our code is a two-to-one, so that means that they are installing mitigation for 1.61 acres. One thing you should note is that they, if an area is already disturbed, then they don't have, it's not considered impact, so if there's already existing impervious services, they don't have to mitigate for that, which is the case in some locations adjacent to Wetland A on the backside of Lot 2.
Would they be taking that out?
Yep. So the use of the site had a lot of, impervious as a concrete, there's a lot of concrete blocks in there, sort of piled up each, on each other, and so in the grading plan, they're proposing to take some of that out.
Just concrete slag left over from cleaning the trucks and all the industrial uses of the site.
That's right. There was some history there. And we also have our water resource consultant on site. The applicant did a study prepared by a wetland consultant. That study was reviewed by the city, and our wetland consultant, David Evans and Associates as well, so our consultant's here to answer any questions you may have regarding the natural resource overlay district. But again, we're, in this particular phase, we're all above the ordinarily-high water mark, no in-ground water.
Was this sent to the Division of State Lands for their comments and review?
Yeah, our code requires that we check with the Corps and DSL and other agencies to make sure that they're on board. The applicant did submit a letter, but it was from a while back, so there is a condition of approval to make sure that they double-check, to make sure that no additional review is needed.
What about the state wildlife and fish commission?
ODF and W? You mean ODF and W, Bob? Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife? Sorry, used initials.
So at this point, we, they're not doing any in-water work, so it's our natural resource overlay district that identifies all the rules and guidelines, which is essentially for all the development area, so the places we're going to impact the vegetated border, which should be lush native vegetation, you have to replant it at a two-to-one ratio, and that's where we do get into native plants and appropriate species, and we have spacing requirements and things like that.
There are some material, plant materials down there that are, you know, blown in on the wind, so to speak, and are not what I would consider to be native. They're not invasive, but they're, they're really not riparian-level type plants that would be growing along a, you know, waterway, since, again, this thing was artificially-created, and here we have it, but...
And as a requirement of our code, and in the application as well, they'll have to remove all nuisance species, so they're working sort of bit at a time, so you can see the areas in which they're disturbing, and where the mitigation plantings are being planted, and they are keeping them in the same location, so if they're disturbing an area, that's where they're replanting, so, which is good in our code. So sort of some big picture on Lot 2, again, 244 units with some office, and then some option of 1,000 square feet that can be office or restaurants. There's also a clubhouse, and additional garages, carports, and other structures. You can see the type of units that they're proposing. Here are a few artist renderings of the proposal. This is reiterating the idea that the street is going to be low, and then the buildings are going to be a bit higher. As you saw in the staff report, there were a couple of adjustments to the code that were approved in 2008, 2009, and some of those adjustments include the ability to be set back from the street, so they removed the maximum setback. We know that there are some grade issues here, so some of the requirements, it still faces the street, and there are conditions of approval, looking at connections to the street, but it is, it's going to be set back a little bit, a little bit higher than the street. This is a site plan for Lot 2. So Building 1 is multifamily, so it's all residential units, and there's a nice pool and a clubhouse. Building 3 and Building 5, those have the commercial uses on the first floor, and multifamily on the subsequent floors above. All the other buildings are multifamily. You can see these smaller buildings here, our garages, and then there's a couple of carports in there. Site circulation on the site, you could enter a few different ways. So Wendy kind of talked about the circulation generally, so there's a driveway entrance, the north driveway entrance. Oregon City Shopping Center, for reference, is right here, and the cove water is right here, so this is the Main Street Extension. There's a condition of approval from the previous master plan that talks about a future connection to the shopping center here, and it would provide both pedestrian and automobile access, and it would be triggered when the Oregon City Shopping Center redevelops, so there would be a connection between the two. At the moment, there's sort of some buildings in the way, and some topography issues. There is this connection over here, which is for the floodplain, so if the floodwaters should rise, this, people could exit the site here. There is a vehicular and a pedestrian connection to the site here, and a connection here, so this is the, leading into the Clackamette River Trail. So I'll show you a little bit later, but these are the pedestrian connections down to that trail.
Excuse the interruption, but at what point do you put this before the fire department for hydrant location and access for emergency vehicles?
So we have, we have sent it to Clackamas Fire District Number 1, we've not received There is a condition of approval to get a final approval on them, so before they build any buildings, it will have to go before the fire district.
Whose jurisdiction authorizes installation of fire hydrants? City or, or fire department?
The city actually has, on, on public streets, the city has spacing standards, and they should be consistent with fire department, so we apply the city standards, and then the fire department will have additional ones for onsite, which the city does not cover. So it'll be covered by both the city and the fire department.
And one more thing about pedestrian circulation on site, so you can see these dash lines, and they identify sidewalks or pedestrian accessways. There's also a way in which people could go in front of these buildings where the commercial spaces are, and they can connect, sorry, they can connect to, all the way over to the pool area, and then they have to sort of jog over, and then the sidewalks sort of dead ends. And on here, in front of Building 1, it also dead ends, so there is a condition of approval to connect the sidewalk here, and connect this accessway here to the sidewalk. There's a variety of conditions or requirements in the code that require direct access to the street, as well as orientation, fronting, things like that. So you will see a condition of approval in staff report for that.
So the commercial space on the bottom floor of Lot 3 and 5, we're imagining businesses unrelated to the development?
There's no criteria anywhere that says what the businesses are, so we don't have, it's, so it's not, it's definitely not in our development code.
But potentially it could be leased to someone that wants a store or something?
But we don't have criteria that has a threshold for the amount of square footage for commercial spaces to make it a mixed use.
In the master plan, it identifies what it can be, so it can be, one of their amendments would be the 5,000 square feet of office and 1,000 square feet of either office or restaurants for a total of 6,500 square feet.
Okay.
And so that is, that is the most we know.
It's my concept of work downstairs, live upstairs. Work, live.
Right.
Coffee shop would do great.
But I'm just thinking, yeah, most restaurants are anywhere between 10,000 and 15,000 square feet.
So it's more of a deli style?
Yeah.
If they choose to do a restaurant, it would be more deli style. We talked about the landscaping plan, lots of landscaping on site. The applicant did, went above and beyond our code requirements to do some of this mitigation by doing a interesting landscaping plan, so that the public would be engaged with the site, and there does maintain a connection between the site and the street. As you can see, that side profile, some of the buildings are going to be a lot higher than the street. than the street, so that's why there's a variety of planting there. Here's some other views of Main Street, so you can see, again, there's a variety of landscaping. Landscaping includes tall, medium, and short, and it is more clustered and less lineal, so a little more organic in nature.
Real quick, can you go back to there?
Yes.
It looks to me like they're showing a sidewalk going along the buildings where your master plan doesn't show sidewalk anymore, so...
So onsite, there is, there is a connection, sorry, let me go this one, there is a way in which you can walk from here all the way up to the pool.
No, I understand that, but if you go back...
Oh.
No, you look too far.
There.
Right there.
There's clearly...
Right next to Main Street, it looks like there's a sidewalk there.
Yeah.
Which...
There's a flat path anyway, whether it's a...
That was deleted from the phasing plan with the, the pink line. That gap in the pink line appears to be bridged on this plan.
Yeah, so...
I think what I'm seeing on there is the roadside swell, but it's hard to tell on this drawing.
No, there's the swell which goes down, then there's a tree, and then there's a flat space with no shrubs.
Correct.
And if you look at the bigger master plan, you see that that, that path continues along, like, I guess we could just leave it to talk to the developer.
That would be, that would be a good thing, because it would maintain the continuity of the sidewalk on both sides of the street.
I, I'm going to offer up that there were different drawings that showed different things, and then I know there was another rendering that showed a sidewalk, but there were...
I mean, I...
Like I said, different drawings showed different things.
Okay.
So what do the buildings look like? So there's a lot of buildings onsite. These are what the buildings that front Main Street will look like. The top one is the clubhouse. The one below that is the one that's the furthest north, that's all multifamily, and then the two below that show the commercial. So on the commercial, the commercial space or that first floor of those two buildings was reviewed in compliance with our commercial design standards, and then all the other floors and all the other buildings were reviewed in compliance with our multifamily. So clubhouse, commercial, bottom floor, commercial, everything else, multifamily, which have pretty clear and objective standards. We believe that the proposal can meet our code with the conditions of approval as specified. Here's some examples of some of the buildings in the parking lot beside, so a lot of them you really can't see from the street. If you were to drive within the parking lot, these are the fronts of the building that face the parking lot, and then an example of a garage as well. So the applicant's also proposed a trailhead parking lot. It's temporary nature, it only will extend during Phase One of development. It will accommodate fourteen stalls. One of the amendments to master plan will be to allow them to do this temporary parking lot. It'll be gravel, but there will be an accessible space and a stall. You can tell that it'll connect to the existing Clackamas River Trail. There's also some minor amendments to the Clackamas River Trail has, near the North Park, where they're doing all that grading, so they're grading, so the trail needs to move, and the trail would move temporarily. So during Phase Two, which is identified in 2016 to start, the permanent trail will be put in, but for now, the applicant would be doing a temporary eight-foot asphalt trail for nine-hundred-and-twenty feet, and so it would bump back a little bit further from the river. You can tell the light gray is the existing trail, and then the nice dash line is the temporary trail. That's all we have for our presentation. Are there any questions we can answer for you?
Any questions from the commission at this time?
Oh, actually, there is one more thing. So we do recommend approval with conditions. I have listed before you, and in the back, there are some copies of conditions. There are some minor, minor tweaks to the conditions that we would like to propose. None of them really change the essence of any condition, they all provide greater specificity of what we're trying to say, so...
Did you figure out which condition was the...
I did, it's eight. It says, "Prior to issuance of a permit associated with the progress of development, the applicant shall submit a revised phasing plan reflecting the uses and square footages identified in the 2009 master plan approval and any approved amendments within this report." So basically, it's saying, we know what has to be there, give us the approved phasing plan that specifies what goes where.
And if I could, I want to add something, since we talked about the sidewalk gap. I want to draw your attention to proposed condition number twenty-eight. So as it's written now, that sidewalk is specifically eliminated from the required cross-section, the gap that you saw in front of the apartments.
So it's, it's not required, but do they have the option to build it if they choose to?
If you approve the conditions as drawn, as proposed, they will not build it.
They will not.
They can, they can, but...
Can you explain again why?
As Tony mentioned, I believe it was because of the retaining walls, and it was approved in the past that way, and...
But I guess the question is if they chose to include that in their design, they could build that.
We would probably want to reword it, because it says sidewalk shall not be required on that portion.
You can always add a sentence that's, that allows them to opt to build them if you want.
Right, I guess my question is, it's not required, but it's not prohibited.
Right.
But if it's not required, doesn't mean they have, they don't have to, so it's just the same.
We would want to specify in the master plan, because you always want to make sure that we're compliant with the master plan, so we would want to make sure we are clear where we have that flexibility or not.
Okay.
Well, just, part of my concern is that people won't, either because of traffic or whatever, want to cross the street to go, you know, four-hundred feet, and they're just going to tromp right through the vegetation, and, you know, come rain or shine, after the first ten people walk in, it becomes a path, and...
That's true.
So...
People will make their own way.
People will make their own path, unless they have some way not to allow that.
And then also, I want to specify that the, the proposal does include, I think the applicant has more pictures of it in their presentation, but this pedestrian crossing across Main Street, there's a lot of design associated with it to draw people, and so it would sort of naturally take you across the street and on the other side of Main Street as well.
I mean, I, I like the concept of pointing people towards a, and once there's more businesses and buildings and stuff, but, you know, if, if somebody's, yeah, it's, if somebody's trying to get to Clackamas Park, they may not want to zig over and then zig back, so...
And that's part of the reason why we did the condition up here, to come down off the site, so they could come down, I mean, a lot of the ways exit here to this main way, so that they could come down and then go up Main Street.
Okay, well...
I, I just think you, you know, if the reason that you're not requiring it is because there's a retaining wall there and you're not providing access, then I think the condition needs to be more specific and say that's why it's not being required, because this just sounds, this doesn't tell me anything. And I think if there's, you know, again, people will take the path of least resistance. We have all of that nice work on McLaughlin Boulevard. I saw a guy the other day throw his bike over the fence to get down to McDonald's instead of going around where you're supposed to go, and he jumped over the top of the fence, so, you know, I rest my case. People will, if they need to get to building, you know, whatever the one is underneath this little projection thing, they will go there, so unless there's a way that physically prohibits them from doing that...
We'll build a moat.
Well, maybe they need a moat, I don't know, but, you know...
I mean, I guess, my, my, my thought is, twenty-eight doesn't prohibit it, it doesn't require it, at a certain point in time after it's been developed and gotten kids and everybody else has started tromping through the, through the landscape, but it doesn't mean that they can't come through and put down a barkdust trail that connects Point Eight to Point B or pave it or whatever. It's on their property, it'll be on their land, and they can, I mean, the thing I was concerned about is that it was being excluded, like, no, you cannot, and, you know, when the time comes, they, you know...
Well, as it reads, it's not prohibited, it's not required.
Right, yeah, and that's, that leaves options open, and that's, that's my concern, so...
I don't think it does leave any options open. I think it says you don't have to do it, and if I was the developer, I wouldn't do it.
The developer's already done a lot of stuff he doesn't have to do, so...
Are all of these sidewalks going to be, you know, concrete, scored, brushed surface, or are there going to be any asphalt pathways or anything else that meanders about the place and kind of creates interest or...
The only, so, yes, they will be all con, all concrete, which complies with our standards in multifamily and commercial. The only place where there is asphalt is the temporary trail, the portion near the North Park that's being, you know, moved around for a year.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
I'd love to see what the, what you can see from the...
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we will take a presentation from the applicant.
So the arrow, the next arrow, move you. You can only do that.
Who issues the landscape update? I'm serious, I'm not voting for this if it is June.
Good evening, my name is Ed Darrell, I'm the principal of Pacific Property, and with me is Reed Stapleton with the Civil Engineering Firm. This project has quite a history. I think the last time I was in front of the URC, they told me they were going to get me a nameplate.
Excuse me, gentlemen, can you take that outside, please? Thank you.
So in 2006, we were invited by the city to come in and see whether we could make the project feasible. Over the last seven years, we've invested probably eight million dollars in doing it. There has been quite a few changes, and the changes were a combination of the economy changing and then just making it a little better project. The real changes come down to phasing, and the original CDP, or the current, one just before the current one, we were mass-grading the site, we were doing Main Street, we were doing half of Agnes, and I have a site plan that will show you this after we get into the narrative, and then doing a portion of Washington and doing grading and setting up the esplanade. Phase Three was to be two-hundred-and-twenty apartments, which now is the two-hundred-and-forty-four. We were doing a portion of Agnes and doing improvements up to Building Four on the waterfront, the final grading. At this time, we were doing on the Four, Five, and Six, these were condominium buildings, and we would only build two at a time just because of the marketplace. Since that time, we've modified that from a hundred and eighty units up to a hundred and ninety-five. We're going to build a hundred and ninety-five all at one time as units for lease, and then with the potential of converting them as we go down line. And then Phase Seven and Eight was the mixed-use building, the Water Sports Center and the This is the prior CDP, which shows in the green, which is this area, this area, this area up here, and the North Park. Originally, the URC was going to make a contribution of seven million dollars to do the infrastructure. When we originally started, we had a, the city did a appraisal, and the property was appraised at a negative twelve million dollars, meaning that it took twelve million dollars to fix the site. We had negotiated a memorandum of understanding with the city to have them contribute the seven million dollars. Since that time, we have taken another route, which is using vertical housing, where we get a tax credit, and we have dropped the requirement for the seven million dollars, so it's, it's been a good approach for both the city and for us. The current CDP is doing Main Street and two-hundred-and-forty-four apartments, which is on Lot One, doing the North Park for exporting and also Lot One for exporting, and then doing water quality. And the water quality is along the water's edge. Phase Two is Agnes and the extension of Washington, and then a hundred and ninety-five multifamily, which will be leased at the outset, but ultimately, we would like to convert those. We will also do the esplanade, and we'll finish the North Park in that phase. Phase Three or Four, whichever one goes first, it's not defined at this point, both of those are office complexes. The Lot Five has up to eighty thousand square feet of potential office, and on the mixed-use lot, that is about fifty-eight thousand. And then the last phase is the Water Sports Center and the Marinas. This shows you the different phases. Phase One is Lot Two and the street in front of it, which is Main Street. Then going to Phase Two, which would be the waterfront units, it's these four lots here, for a total of six buildings for a hundred and ninety-five units. Phase Three or Four, once again, are the two office units. This Lot Five has up to eighty thousand, this has about fifty-eight thousand. This shows the actual phasing. Phase One, the two-forty-four, which is the Lot Two, and Phase Two, which is the hundred and ninety-five, which is all the waterfront, and Phase Three or Four, the two different office components. The garden has already, has been defined as the two-forty-four with some office, about six thousand, five thousand, and then additionally, the potential for a restaurant.
What do you mean by garden apartment? Just maybe explain that to the public.
The garden apartment is usually a larger parcel where you place the buildings around, and between all the buildings, you do a lot of landscaping. So you basically have walkways that take you, meander through a garden area and take you to the units. So it's, as opposed to being a downtown vertical building where you park in a structure and you get in, you know, out of your car and go up in an elevator. So it's, it's, it is, it takes up more site to do that, but they become more of a livable Value is estimated about forty-five million, it'll be about four-hundred-and-forty residents. You've already seen the site plan. There is commercial opportunity on the bottom floor here on Main Street, a recreation and leasing building here, and the balance of the buildings are through the garden area, which is planted heavily, as you saw on the landscape plan. This is an overview, the Oregon City Shopping Center over here, the garden apartments taking up this site, which is about eleven acres, the waterfront taking up about eight acres for the hundred and ninety-five units, and Main Street being fully improved up to here for the first phase, and then in the second phase, picking up at the roundabout and doing Agnes and then going down Washington. You saw this slide before, apartment building here, the rec building. The nice thing about the rec building, it has a pool here, and it sits here, and for marketing purposes, people walk in, you've got glass all across the front, and it looks right out to the Cove, so it's a very nice setting for marketing. This is the roundabout area on Main Street going up this way and then connecting to Agnes. And as you saw on the landscape plan, this is a concept plan here, but the planning is very heavy in this area.
Which, which area again?
Where it's kind of just plain and green.
All in the front facing Main Street.
Yeah, we, we can't see the little red dot, so we have to crane our necks and look up there.
Okay. But it was on that, all the area in front between the buildings down to Main Street. This is the connectivity for the overall site with the two-hundred-and-forty-four units, Main Street, and there is a connection here, which I think the staff showed you, which was going over to Oregon City Shopping Center, that got left out on this drawing. Then up here is the balance of Main Street, and this is the Agnes, and then this is the extension to Washington. The nice things about the waterfront area as a Phase Two, we have already completed about ninety-five percent of all the working drawings for that phase also. The landscape plan here is substantial. As you know, we're going to be cutting back part of this material here, rolling it back up to create an elevation high enough for the buildings to be out of the floodplain, and in doing that, we're planting hundreds and hundreds of, of plants and different species here. We do have that planting plan available. Then the esplanade, esplanade is actually twelve feet wide to the very center, and then on each side of, for a hundred feet, it's twenty feet wide to accommodate the programming which we talked about for different venues. The hundred and ninety-five, all of the units face the water. These are what's called a single-loaded building, so you go up to the building, it goes four stories high, there's an elevator that'll take you to each of the floors... stories high, there's an elevator that'll take you to each of the floors, but there's no living on the 205 side. It's all single-loaded, so when you walk in a unit, you're walking right out, and you're looking at the water. We've done eight waterfront projects. You like to get as much glass on that side as you can, and in this case, almost all of those units are 26 feet wide, all glass. So it'll be a spectacular setting for the residents. You have about 8,700 square feet of office in the waterfront, and a couple of nice restaurants. Those are going to be about 3,000 square feet. And then the waterfront, because of the cost and the designing it more to a condominium standard, it has not only a higher value, but a higher cost. It has about, about 60 million. This is showing where the commercial part is in each of the buildings. So every building that faces the street has to have a component of at least 50% facing that street to be able to get the tax exemption that we needed to support the infrastructure. This just shows you one building where the red part is the office component. That'll be exactly what you were saying, this is a live-work program primarily, and that's what we hope that we get for the residents.
I said it the other way around.
Work-live. Fine.
My fellow commissioners know we had a little debate about that.
So which do you do? You've got to live first, and then you can work.
Well, you've got to work first in order for you to live.
Okay, fine.
I was alive before I ever worked.
Debate's not, the debate is not over.
This shows you the component here in front, which would be basically the entry to the work-live, and this is going all by itself. Let me go back to that one. There is parking for bikes, there are garages, and then there's parking in front of the unit. This is the main entrance here, so we've got four stories. The bottom floor of these waterfront units have both living and out in front of the building. In front of the living units are these work-live. And so we have a secured entry. Elevator goes up to the four floors, three floors, and then you access across here, and you go into a unit, and you're looking right out at the water. Gets you a look at the backside with the esplanade running along. Don't know why this guy's jumping on me.
Because it's a computer.
The, there's access down to the esplanade between the buildings. I think we have two or four access points. Then at the very Main Street, we have an access at that end, and at the other end, we have another access. The mixed-use building and the waterfront, those are two options for Lot Five and for Lot One. Those are not currently being, we've got designs for, employment designs, but they're not actually into a production program at this point. In terms of construction, we have economic value of about 105,000, 105 million, and this will support labor income of about 10 million, about 250 jobs. The actual operations of the two different projects, when they're into production, will have about $582,000 annually. Resident spending, and this is right out of the book, the people that are actually renting spend more money locally than people that are in a single-family detached. And on the office component, with the two larger office buildings, we're looking at about 117,000 square feet. There is a real nice complement of public amenities that go on primarily in the second phase. And at the very north end, we have the esplanade. This is 5.8 acres. It will be, dirt will be borrowed from here, will create a bowl shape, so this will support a lot of people. We'll also, in phase two, be building a stage that'll have electricity to it, and it will have an access point up here to bring down equipment. The water sports center is, out of a project that we did in Lake Oswego, we built a water sports center, and it was kind of like a, let's, you know, build this and see what happens. Well, it turned out to be spectacular. There's three high schools that use it for sculling. It's been a place to teach kids water safety, so that worked out very well. This shows the basic public amenities, which are substantial. Trailhead parking up here, that I think is a total of 18 spaces. And as you come down, there's connectivity to the Oregon City Shopping Center, which people come across the esplanade, go up through this access point, and can access to the Oregon City Shopping Center. And as I mentioned earlier, we have access points as you go through the waterfront to get down to the esplanade, and then we have the office component, the swim docks, as you probably, if you've been down there, you know there's a lot of steel sticking out of the water. Most of those will try to preserve, cut down, and then used for putting docks for public use. So it's not our intention to make this a cloistered area where just these people that are living on the water are secured. Of all the projects that we've done, we always give something back in terms of access to the waterfront. And in this case, this esplanade will be spectacular. As I mentioned, about 100 feet on each side, is 200 feet wide, balance of it's like 12. So of the different paths that we've built, and the concept, Tidewater Cove, and I've taken, so well, not you, but I took the other commissioners over there and showed them that project, we did a 12-foot wide, and it was a combination of a lot of people running, people on bikes. We did not do a, you know, this is for bikes and this is for walking, people pretty much segregated themselves. We can do signings that'll say that, but it's not going to change what happens. People just go out there and walk, and people go out there and ride, so.
And where was this again, sir?
That's Tidewater Cove.
Oh, okay.
Lake Oswego, we built a smaller path, it was only like eight feet wide, but that gets so much use that it's phenomenal. So one of the things that we like to say is that we're actually changing the environment, and we really do spend a lot of time figuring out how to create and remediate, get rid of the invasive species, enhance and create new places for habitat. And then, like on our big project that we did down at the coast, 100 acres right on the ocean, we actually, when people bought units there, we gave them a book and said, you have to study this book on how to preserve the dunes, how to preserve the wetlands that we preserve, 35 acres. We planted substantial plants in the wetlands, and it became a real foraging area. We have a couple of wetlands on the site, which will be protected, and it's basically trying to give something back and make sure that the habitat isn't overlooked, and we're not just here to build units. We want to make this a spectacular site. So that's, you have other things you want to add?
I don't, not, not for this.
He's my backup. So we could go to questions, I guess, if you have any questions.
Want to do the other PowerPoint as well?
Well, I was going to, we, this is just the CDP, and then I'll introduce Paul Herskowitz, who's with, the developer that's actually building the 244 units, and it was a whole basis for us as original developers splitting that off. That's another story, which I could present to you another time. Do you want to go CDP and then DDP, or do both of them?
If you're going to get questions on both, you might as well just do them both.
Well, let me introduce Paul Herskowitz.
I'm Paul Herskowitz, I'm the developer of the property for Grand Peaks Properties. You notice, it's Grand Cove, that's our entity for this particular development. We've been, we've been working on this project for just about a year, talking, trying to figure out all the many, many things. I think that between what Laura has presented to you and what Ed has talked to you about, I think, I'm not going to dwell on particular details, I think we'll leave that for the question and answers and so forth. But if we can go to, let's see what happens.
It's not clicking.
Of course not.
Where am I pointing? Right there?
It's just going to be cranky.
That's the end of your presentation?
It's lovely!
Well, it only left me about one minute and 47 seconds, so.
That's a world's record.
One second.
We always appreciate brevity.
I'll be there for you. I'll just tell you that Grand Peaks is a developer based in Denver. We own about 6,000 units at this point. We, we both develop and acquire properties. In any moment now, I'll be able to show you a little bit of some of the things we've done.
Are these going to be market rate?
Yeah, that's certainly our plan, yeah. I don't know how people do, quote, affordable housing in today's world.
Don't know, you can talk to the city of Portland, they're trying to do it.
There you go. There we go. So that's our loading. The, just to give you a little idea, I put a couple of slides in here of what we've, what we've done in the past in the Portland area. The project that's substantially, you got the brown roofs in the middle here, is called Cascade Summit Apartments, it's in West Lynn. I did this when I was at Simpson Housing, it was 298 units, market rate. The city of West Lynn went ahead and built their city hall across the street, probably because our project looks so, so good, I'm not sure, but anyhow, there's a safe way there. I mean, when we built that project, there was, there was basically not, there was a lot of single-family homes, but there was very, very little else up there, and since then, it's, it's pretty miraculous with the church and, and all the development in that vicinity there.
What year was that?
Built that in 1996 and '07. Another project I did in the Portland area was out in Hillsborough, I did a project called Club 1201. It was a 210-unit condominium that we did out there. It's right at the light, the light rail stop is just to our south there, and everybody knows about, obviously, Orenco Station. This was our development, 210 units. We sold it to a whole heck of a lot of Intel employees, pretty, pretty phenomenal. It sold, we were selling 15 to 20 a month, it was pretty remarkable.
You said those are condos?
Those were condos, yes, we did. Another project, a much more recent project, we, we bought a project in Gresham that is 440 units. It was called Holly Ridge at the time. It was a project built in the 1980s, very, very tired, is the best that I could call it. And it's right on West Powell and all that. We took a clubhouse, it was very, very 1980s, and we tried to make it in, I should have probably put a few more shots here for you, but we really changed it, and we still own this property, it's, it's doing terrific. We just changed the style of the project. We manage all of our own properties too, so. We would, on, on this property, we would have three management employees and three maintenance people basically working full-time. A recent development that I just finished in Denver was 265-unit project called Elevation County Line Station. It's right across the street from a light rail in, in the Denver area. Also did a 248-unit project called the Park at Greenwood Village in Denver, again, at a light rail station, a little bit further, but easily within walking distance, so. You can, you can see just, I mean, this is, this product, excuse me, this product type is a little bit different, obviously, and so forth, but you can see the level of quality that we try to achieve. Here's your front door right now at, at this site. It's an old batch plant, it has a tremendous amount of concrete still hanging around it. It has, in my opinion, a lot of ugliness to it. And, you know, what we're trying to do, what, what we want to do with your assistance is to create, you know, some of the scenes that you've seen from Laura and from, from Ed, and do a conventional, nice-looking marketplace, market rate apartment community in this area, 244 units. Again, we would manage the property and, and maintain it. So I have brought, basically, our whole team is here, you've met Reed here, he's with our civil engineer, Dow Engineering, and we have our civil engineer here also, we have our architect here, our traffic consultant is here, and maybe our, our natural resources, Pacific Habitat, is he, is he here? Pacific Habitat. So, you know, we, we would really appreciate, because we know, at the time, you know, this property is basically, our proposal to you is basically a change, minor alteration, we believe, of the CDP, a detailed plan of our DDP. The planning commission approved CDPs and DDPs for the entire project that Ed was talking about, and specifically for ours, and we're basically just amending it. We would appreciate your action on this tonight, and the reason why is I know that your meeting on the 28th has been canceled, know that your meeting on the 11th is fully jammed, and that brings it to the 25th of January, and I'm telling you, we have a lot to do, we want to start construction on this project in April, and if, if we have to wait that long for it, April will not happen. We, we need to work through this thing and get it done, so I hope that you have the information you need to make a decision, so.
Does the commission have any questions for the applicant at this time? Damon?
I have a fairly simple, straightforward question. The additional units, the, whatever, 24 or whatever additional units, are the, have the buildings become bigger, or is it just a change in the floor plans that's creating more units?
Well, I, I can, I can bring Lloyd Hill up, he's the architect. He did not work on the 220-unit property, nor did we, so.
Okay, so.
I don't know that.
So, then, I guess.
I can answer that.
Yes.
That was a different developer that came into the project originally.
He's a little closer to the mic.
Yeah, Ed Darrell.
Yeah.
That was a different developer, totally different concept in terms of the floor plans and different building elevations, but basically the same kind of product, garden apartments.
Okay, thank you.
I noticed that you guys were removing about 200 trees. Are you planning on replacing all those trees, or, I know you have to do that for the grading and fill and all that other stuff.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
There's no other way you can get around it.
We do, and Laura made sure that we do the replacements required by code.
Can you go back to that, the first slide, which shows the existing conditions? It's just a little bit different way, I mean, I, obviously, I've been by this site, but you know, you can't quite see it the way that you're showing it, showing it here, so.
Nice small picture.
So the trees that are along the backside of where you would go to the Oregon City Shopping Center, all of that's going to be removed, or is that on their property?
That's in the wetlands.
Most of those are on the shopping center site. There are, there are some on our site that actually would be, that would be preserved.
Okay.
Yeah, but you, it's, that would remain.
Got a question for you. I noticed you put a lot of emphasis on pedestrian circulation and things of that nature. You've got a gold mine there in that Oregon City Shopping Center, and it doesn't appear to mean that you've taken any advantage of pedestrian access from your, from your project into the Oregon City Shopping Center. You got access for cars, for emergency escape, and I think one other access, but what do you do for pedestrians, so they can get from your project to the Oregon City Shopping Center?
There's no way through the middle of it?
Well, yeah, I'll take a crack at it, and Paul, you can, you can add to it. I mean, for one, there is a condition to provide a sidewalk down Main to Firestone, so you would have a connection on that public thoroughfare. There's, there's an easement, I think Laura mentioned, that would allow for a future public connection to that property at such time that it would redevelop. But as, as you probably know, that, that is the back of house, that's where loading is, and it's.
Yeah, I, I, that crossed my mind.
Sure, yeah, yeah, so it's not currently a condition where you would see that type of pedestrian activity, but we have accommodated for it in the future.
Bob, there's, there's no way through the center? You can drive around the, well, let's just say, in the, in the past, you could drive around past where. around past where Rite Aid is, and you could go all the way down the back and then about the other side where the Emporium used to be, but there's nothing, there's no way to make a connection through the middle of it or anything like that.
Yeah, there's no path through at this time.
So that's why they're saying in the, in the future, but it's a.
Any other questions?
Where's the, the, well, for instance, so let's say I rent an apartment in the garden apartments, and I have to bring my stuff, and so where's loading and where do the moving vans go? I mean, I, you know, some people are going to have U-Haul trucks. How are you accommodating for that kind of thing, and delivery trucks, and, you know, UPS people, and?
Since you will have commercial, although there may be deliveries there.
Yeah, we, we would think that, because of the size of them, we would think that they would be nominal, nominal deliveries and so forth. At all of our communities, the deliveries typically happen during the daytime, obviously, when many, many people are at work and so forth. Every, every day, the UPS trucks, just like they do with single-family subdivisions and condos and so forth, they just pull up and they make their deliveries and so forth. We don't, we typically don't take the space for, for loading zones and so forth in the, in these communities.
So you're saying there aren't going to be any loading zones?
There, there are no, no loading zones that we typically ever have in, in apartments. We do, when we do urban deals where, you know, it's a very, very tight site and structured parking or something like that, you'll have loading docks and so forth, but typically on garden style, they pull up with their U-Haul, park how, how they can, and unload.
Any other questions at this time?
Not at this time.
I do want to make, excuse me, I do want to make one, just final comment with some of the questions that came up with, actually, on staff presentation. There was a question about the cross-section on Main Street and the shed section and the swale and potentially providing a sidewalk there. I just wanted to point out that that cross-section of Main Street has been approved for nearly seven years with the original approval. So that shed section and the swale on the apartment site is a part of the original DDP approval, and it's actually condition twenty from that original approval. So what we're doing is simply implementing what was approved back with the original approval.
But I don't, I wasn't here seven years ago, and I don't really know what it looks like.
Sure.
That's why I was asking, where's the cross-sections in the, in the plan?
I understand.
Especially when you're, the picture you have currently shows a cross, or a sidewalk. The picture you have right there right now shows a sidewalk.
Who did that?
There's no sidewalk on that side of the building. There's a swale, there's a, there's a concrete apron.
Microphone.
Yep, can't talk in the audience.
I'll introduce myself. I'm the architect Lloyd Hill and the, and the planner here. So when we did this illustration here, the, the, there's, was intended to be a concrete apron at the driveway, where it turns up here, and then a stormwater swale along in front of the buildings. So I apologize if it looks like a sidewalk, but it's intended to be the stormwater swale there.
Okay.
And what, what Reed pointed out, the fact that this was previously approved, you know, as part of an approval long ago, regardless of that, there is a twenty or twenty-two-foot elevation change from Main Street up to the buildings, and we have tried, we've worked very hard to mitigate that big change in elevation by breaking it up with low retaining walls and massings of shrubs and setting the buildings back sufficient distance and so forth. There simply isn't enough room to also provide a pedestrian pathway of any width along there in addition to the other steps in the landscaping and so forth, so.
I just would suggest that in future drawings, if it's concrete, it's gray, because the sidewalk, that's clearly a sidewalk, is the same color as your swale. So it looks like a sidewalk, so.
So I, I apologize for that.
Okay, so thank you very much for the presentation. At this time, we will take public testimony, and the first person I have signed up to speak is Jerry Herman.
I live at, actually, Gladstone, but I love, love this project, and I've watched it evolving over the years. Seven years ago specifically, I got involved in Clackamas Cove, trying to advocate for a solution that would showcase the environment and also be, do something for the economy. And I think what's going on here represents both of those, those things. My comments tonight are on behalf of my organization, Rivers of Life Center, it's called. It's a youth education and training organization, and I don't intend to inhibit this project moving forward in any way, because I think it's time that something happened. Wants to say something about Cascade Ridge. I grew up in West Lynn. I'm high upon a hill so noble as West Lynn High, but way above that is Cascade Ridge, which served as a major focus point for city hall to be developed in West Lynn. And the Safeway and other complex there include a lot of improvements that I think these developers, I didn't know that they had done that project, brought into West Lynn. Seven years ago, we, we organized, my organization organized with Clackamas Community College a tour of the facilities that Ed Darrell and his organization have built over the years, looking at Tidewater Cove, which you heard about tonight, looking at Oswego Point and Foothills Park, which came from that effort in Lake Oswego, looked at areas even Fairview that might represent Clackamas Cove and as, as it might evolve. And people from the city staff were involved in that. People from the commission, city commission and planning commission were involved. And I, at that point, took it to heart that these people know what they're doing. Now, why am I here tonight? There's a few things that I put on this list, this paperwork for you to look at, that are foremost important to us. They have nothing to do necessarily with your approval of this project, but I want you to think about these things. First of all, Clackamas Cove is forty-eight acres of open water. It's very important water for the investor group that's behind us, for the public that wants to see this project move forward. Water quality is very important. You're talking about a water resource overlay district, and yet we're not talking about the water quality. Water quality's gone bad in the Cove this year, which I predicted several years ago would happen, because the Clackamas River has basically changed its course, filled up the mouth with a huge gravel bar, and caused then the tide to no longer do its work. On the third page of what I provided to you is my attempt to show you what the tide does. In my, in my spare time, I work on projects like this, and those arrows indicate to you where the tide kind of moves throughout the Cove. I could tell you why that was in a, in a few moments here, because it's very important. The tide has kept the Cove cleansed. These folks behind us are not responsible for the tide not doing its job anymore. Seven years ago, eight years ago no less, we initiated a process to get West Lynn, Oregon City and Gladstone involved in advocating for a joint permit from the Corps of Engineers and the Division of State Lands that would put a water quality channel in place that would also serve as public access, excuse me, safety access for marine patrol vessels and so forth. That permit was granted eight years ago. It has not been yet exercised. I spent a lot of time fooling around, going to the county commissioners and others to gain their support. We needed their money to do a hydrologic study. People in this room, Richard Craven, I think is still behind me, a member of our natural resource committee, oversaw that study. The permit was granted. It's time to exercise the permit and get the water quality channel in place, or, and/or, look at some other supplemental water ways to keep the Cove healthy, because we can't afford to lose the value of that water. The public, I think, expect to swim in something and not be in a place where we can have no touch, no use water. The second thing I want to tell you about for just a moment was, I think, you know, I've watched many projects over the years evolve, and residents and visitors don't quite understand what's happening. I know you'll have areas that probably are off limits as the work is going on, but where we could, I have a good use for campaign signs. Spray them out with gray, automotive paint, shall we say. Put on them vinyl lettering bonded to them stating future beaver habitat, future trail access, and so forth, so people can begin to get the tone of what's going on there. I think we have a chance to educate people as the work is going forward with some very simple signage. I'd be glad to help you with this. I've done this in many different places. The Environmental Learning Center at the college was a place where we did that. They've asked me to come back and help them put that project back together, and that's what we're going to do up there starting this spring. The other thing is, I'm being quick here, I'd love to see this project involve alternate, alternative workforce people. What am I talking about? Well, the contract industry is very important, but there's youth in this city and at-risk youth that could work in teams to do non-critical work in various parts of this project. I talked with Mr. Darrell about this ideal. They'd have to be insured through the organizations that they work for. They'd have to have workman's comp. They'd have to do the work in, in, not in competition with other contractors, but non-critical landscape clearing and things like that, some habitat enhancement work, things of that nature, are things that they could do. There are projects like Project Payback that does this kind of work. Many, many resources around. Wouldn't it be neat to see the students of Oregon City Senior High School, along with at-risk youth, building the trails that are not critical paved, concrete types of trails for access to the Cove in the future, putting in habitat improvements, making the site more pleasing, and then have a feeling of ownership? Wouldn't that be a nice thing to do for a different approach to this project? I think this project warrants that kind of consideration. The last thing is, this summer I became aware of what's called the Lower Harbor Trustland, and I'm going to ask you as a body to invite them to come and talk to you, their representatives, about making Willamette Falls area, the falls, below the falls, the Lynn City side of the river, West Lynn, I just said, the Gladstone side of the river, mitigation areas for the work that they're trying to accomplish to clean up the lower Willamette. They can't do it in the lower harbor as cheaply as they can do it by buying and improving habitat, I should say, making improvements in areas up here. I talked to Mr. Darrell about this, and the Cove could become in the future, not tonight, but in the future, a target site for the things that we can't afford to do as a city, or they can't afford to do as developers, with HCP people, people that, excuse me, work as private consultants to agencies, to bring lower harbor trustland enhancement projects to the Cove, to the lower Clackamas, to the areas along Oregon City's beaches, off of Sportcraft Landing, perhaps even up to Legacy Project. So I'd ask you to consider those things tonight. I'm not asking that they inhibit this project from going forward, because these are quality people. Now I understand who Grand Peaks is. I did not know. Cascade Summit in West Lynn is a great place to go look at their work, and I've already seen the work that Mr. Darrell and his company have done in various cities. So thank you for letting me comment.
Great, thank you very much. The next person I have speaking is Byron Boyce.
Yeah, I'm Brian Boyce. I'm an Oregon City resident. I'm also a longtime board member for the Clackamas River Basin Council, which, who I'm speaking in, on behalf of tonight. I'm adding a little bit to my prepared notes because of some of the things I've heard tonight, and some of this, like what Mr. Herman said, will apply in the second phases and to some extent the first phase. One could say that a city's work is never done, and, and the Cove project has certainly proven that. But I want to congratulate the city and the developers for getting the process almost done at this point in time. The Clackamas River Basin Council has watched this process and the proposed development over the years. A few years back, we made some comments that were important at that point in time. We, we now wish to make a few new comments, not to oppose the project or, but to just express some of our questions about some aspects of the, what's going on here. I have to echo Denise's, Denise McGriff's comments on increased use of native plants. I think to, at least to some extent, that can be done. But the real issues are dealing with the Cove itself, and there's, it's a part of the river system, and it's directly connected with it, and it's being cut off by gravel deposition. No one knows how much gravel is in the mouth of the Cove because of our recent high water. It could be a lot more than there was a couple weeks ago. We just don't know. But the extent of the dredging needs to be defined once we can see again, and also, this is going to be an ongoing thing. This is the point, the mouth of the Cove just happens to the point where tides from the Pacific Ocean come up, stop the flow of the river, and that's where the gravel is deposited. So it's not going to be a one-time deal. You can't just dredge it and say, "Great, we're done," you know?
It never was. The whole time it was a pit. They were clearing, clearing, clearing all the time.
Well, originally, there was a forested island there that was mined away.
Yeah.
So it's been going on for who knows how long, you know? As long as there's been a river there and, you know, since the Ice Age, let's say. But we, we know that the developers now proposing not to have motorized boats, other than perhaps a sheriff, but emphasize kayaks, paddleboards, things like that with, and that will lead to less dredging and, and lower cost in the long run, because you don't need to do as much. The Clackamas River Basin Council has a large project using a variety of funding sources in Gladstone starting next year, which includes two tidally influenced wetlands that will be, and it's fairly precise elevation-wise, but we, we're convinced that the reasonable dredging that's being proposed will not affect the water levels at that point. You also have the issues of the main channel filling in like it used to be and, and having boat access at all up the Clackamas. That is a developing problem, but that's, that's another story. And we need to look at all the issues in this area as a whole. There is quite a bit of funding available, more than there's ever been, and more than is likely to be available in the, in the not-too-distant future, to do restoration projects. And it would really help if the city, with the help of both agency and nonprofit partners, try to develop a plan that will lead to accessing the funds that are available to do improvements, and perhaps also tie together multiple projects that will take place over years, because, well, for example, balance, cut and fill, if that's spread over multiple projects, it becomes much easier. That's just one example. And there's the law of unintended consequences. They, I like using an older example that, well, it's older in, in when it started, but in the nineteen thirties, they started dredging out the Willamette, which before that was choked in gravel and impassable much of the year to boats. It created a deep channel, and of course, and plus the gravel dredging in the Clackamas led to the Clackamas cutting down, which led seventy-five years later to a certain bridge going like that and having to be removed. And so that, and there's a similar thing with this dredging, is how will that affect erosion along the North Spit? We don't know. That needs to be studied. Also, I did take note that there's still plans being talked about, about a path out the North Spit. That has extremely steep sides. It has steady erosion every time there's high water, when the Willamette is low especially. And you have vertical drop-offs that are large enough to kill people. And I would never take a renegades child or even a dog out there, because it's a darn dangerous place, and you need to consider your liability out there. And, and you need to consider that the fact that it's continually eroding, and the next big flood could take out a big chunk of that. Can that be addressed? That's going to take some study. We don't know how, how that could be addressed or if it can be, but you don't want that to fail, which it almost did once before and was repaired. So, but there's a variety of desirable changes that, some of which are starting to take place or will start next year with outside funding and manpower. And West Lynn is also looking at the same funding sources as Jerry Herman. And the city could take advantage of those, especially if there was a comprehensive idea of the different pieces. Most of the southern bank of the Clackamas is owned by the city of Oregon City, up to where there's a few houses, and then there's the freeway bridges and so on, which is more public land. And if we can work in a team-wise fashion with the nonprofits and government agencies that are interested in restoring habitat and so on, we, we could get something done in the city that, and the Cove could benefit from those studies like that, so. So, that's my basic, there's some synergies that could take place, in other words. And you've got people willing to work with the city and, and funding that's available. That's the beautiful thing. And there's more right now than there will be in the future.
Thank you.
So, that's, that's my commentary. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you have something written you were giving us or that's?
I didn't print it out. I could send a PDF if people are interested. It would be much of what I said tonight.
Okay. And we have some other people signed up. And I failed to mention before we started the public testimony that if you can confine your comments to three minutes, that would be great. Otherwise, we could be here a very long time.
And, excuse me, and?
Yes, ma'am.
Relate your comments to the applicable approval criteria would be helpful as well.
Right. That would be great. And all of the comments were excellent comments, but we do need to try to confine the comments to the applicable approval criteria so that we can make a decision tonight.
Mr. Chair, before you go to the next person?
Yes, ma'am.
Brian, I apologize that you had to sit down. I have actually a quick question for you.
Actually, we need to change our tape.
Okay.
And it'll take about two minutes.
Okay. So we will take a five-minute recess while they re-
Change the tape.
Change the tape. We're going to reconvene.
Oh, you're not on.
We're going to reconvene the hearing. So we will continue with the public testimony on the Cove apartments at this time. And as I mentioned before, we went to break. If, if you can limit your comments to three minutes, that would be great. I'd appreciate that so we can get done tonight. So the next person I have to speak is Heidi, and I'm not going to try to pronounce your last name. I'll let you do that.
Bezarides.
Mm-hmm. Bezarides, right?
Good evening. My name is Heidi Bezarides. I live in unincorporated Claquamas County, 3.5 miles northeast of Claquamas Cove. In the summer months, I swim in the Cove at least twice a week. Year-round, I run or bike around the Cove on the Claquamas River Trail. I am here speaking about the importance of preserving water quality and no non-motorized uses of the Cove when considering the Cove development. The Claquamas Cove is a natural gem in the greater Portland metro area. Osprey, bald eagles, and ducks are everyday companions of the Cove. I can tell you from experience that while swimming or paddling on the Cove, you feel like you're in a wild park removed from the city, even though 205 is moments away. Development along the east side of the Cove will drastically change that feeling. The Claquamas Cove is the only, and I stress that, the only and excellent public access body of water in the Portland metro area that is for primarily non-motorized recreation, including swimming, fishing, and paddling. I am one of the many who train for triathlons by regularly swimming at the Cove. And because I visit the Cove regularly throughout the year, I can tell you that hundreds of fellow citizens enjoy recreating in, on, and around this natural area. My biggest concern with the proposed Cove development is that running off roofs and parking lots is designated to drain directly into the Claquamas Cove with minimal filtration. In our discussions at the break here, I was educated about the filtration that will occur, and I'm encouraged by that. But my biggest concern is that I don't want the water quality to be compromised dramatically because there are animals that live in the Cove and there are people who swim in and around and enjoy the Cove. Later phases of the Cove development call for dredging and creating boat marinas. I'm also thrilled to learn tonight that those will be non-motorized marinas. I urge the Oregon City Planning Commission to preserve water quality and non-motorized status of the Claquamas Cove. The Claquamas Cove has a positive impact on the health and well-being of members of our larger community, and development should not exclude community use.
Thank you.
Thank you. And only two minutes. Very nice. The next person to speak is Justin Iverson.
Good evening. I'm Justin Iverson. I'm an Oregon City resident. I really had just a couple of concerns. Main thing is the lack of, what appears to be the lack of public access. You've got just one little swimming, I guess, area, it looks like, and these marinas, but there's no boat access. So I don't see the point for the marinas really. Excuse me. But the other thing is, what about property values? Are property values going to go skyrocketing around the area to where they're not affordable anymore? Or how is that going to work out? I don't, I don't, it seems like we're trying to change Oregon City to a miniature like a Swigo, and that's going to be, that's concerning a little bit for, for my family. Because if, if property values go up too much more, we couldn't afford to keep our home. So, those were the only two major things I really had.
And I can briefly address that. The Claquamas Park will still have its ramp, and there'll still be other ways to get boats in. It's currently a non-motorized, with the exception potentially of the sheriff's rescue boat, which, you know, since everybody keeps drowning in high rocks, you want them as close as possible anyway. But that would be the only motorized use, so, you know, kayakers could just park in the parking lot and walk over to the promenade and it's-
That I agree with. Because we go swimming there every weekend during the summer and as well as hundreds of families do.
Sure.
That's why I wonder, why do we have two marinas on the?
Yeah, they're-
That's confusing a little bit.
They're just places for people to tie up their boat rather than trying to drag them up onto the, onto the ground, which would tear up the vegetation and all that. It'd be a way for people to access, you know, stepping onto a dock and all that. It's not, current plans don't have, like, houseboats or, you know, sport craft, you know?
What about swimming areas? Are there going to be?
The whole Cove is still going to be wide open.
That is still going to be wide open?
Yeah, there isn't, it isn't like little fenced off, like in Blue Lake Park where you have the-
That's what I was, that's what it kind of was imagining there.
The whole Cove is still public.
Actually, the entire esplanade on the waterfront on the east side is entirely open to the public.
Yeah.
Are you concerned, Justin, that there's not going to be any quote-unquote, like, beach area, so to speak?
A little bit, just because as it is, there's not a lot of beach area now, and so it does get crowded. And if we're taking away even more of that quote-unquote beach area, then potential for everything to get crowded grows drastically.
The last diagram I saw for the promenade, which hasn't, they haven't come to it with a detailed drawing of it yet, but it had a large grassy area in the front, and then the paved area, and then the buildings. So there actually will probably be more public beachy park area. I don't know about direct access to the water because you're dealing with some slopes and issues like that, but I think there'd be a much more picnic area available than even there currently is, although it's not really a picnic area. But there will be more of that, at least some of the earlier drawings I saw in the first proposals.
Mr. Chair, I just, when you answered his question, were you talking about motorized or non-motorized?
I did, non-motorized.
Well, no, it was like, I got, you know, what about public access for boats? I don't know what, you know, does that mean a boat with a motor or a boat with a?
Well, they specifically-
No, no, I know it says non-motorized. I'm asked, I was asking how you were answering his question. Were you concerned about motorized? No. You want non-motorized.
Yeah, well, I was mainly concerned because it says non-motorized, but then it showed two marinas, and I was thinking, because I come from a boating background, so I'm thinking marina, you would be a powerboat.
Yeah, you could take your little sailboat and, you know, your little paddle or your kayak. To me, that's non-motorized, whatever.
Canoe.
Canoe, yeah. There you go, canoe. Okay.
And then you've got your float boats, that sort of stuff, that somebody might come down from the Claquamas and then-
Well, paddle boats as well. Paddle boats would be non-motorized. Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. The next person to speak is Dorothy.
Do you have any word about that last name?
Dorothy D.
Dorothy D.
I'll be very brief. There was a couple of things I was concerned about in the Cove area. One is, I walk down there probably three to four times a week with my dog. I know I'm going to lose that non-leash area. And I, and I love how we're embracing metro, but that also means no dogs in metro area. The walkway along the esplanade, when you're walking along there with animals or a dog on a leash, no matter what, your dogs will move and flip back and forth. Some people have long extended leashes so they can really stretch out. There is a concern about bicycles. I embrace bicycles, bicycles, especially commuters, but it would help to have at least a guideline, pictures of a bicycle maybe on the right-hand side. They don't use bells here, bicycle bells. Too wimpy in Oregon. Europe's very easily embraced because they clink before they're coming up behind you, but man, I'm almost taking out several bicyclers with my dog. And she's just a little 60-pounder, and she's on leash usually in those areas. When I'm walking on a, on a pedestrian area, I leash her. So that's, would be nice if it could be addressed, maybe even of a colored path, because already bicycles in Portland already have a green path, areas where you shouldn't be parking or be aware that there's bicycles. So also with an additional 400 units, I bet you're going to get another 75 dogs in those in units. So we have to think of possible fenced-in dog areas and/or an open leash dog. Also, the conifers that are going to be planted, the trees, I'd really like to see natural Oregon native trees, mixed conifers. There was mentions about junipers. Yes, everyone hates a juniper. It's only good for one thing, gin. And, but, things like stargazing magnolias or star magnolias, those are small, small tree. We, we have eagles and osprey that nest and raise their young in that area every year. I see no less than three or four eagles nest, and also osprey nesting in that area. Eagles, lease landing and territorial. We need tall trees, not just short trees. We can have 400 little tiny trees, but if there's not some, they're going to reach up to 14, 18, 25, 30 feet in the air. We're going to lose those. And so we're going to lose some of those trees, but I think in our replanting, we need to say, yes, there's going to be some big giants going back in. A couple of windows might have a problem with it, but they're, they're valuable to our, and our, to our nature area right there. Also, I'd like to see sidewalks on both sides of the streets, and I don't think 18 off-street parking is enough. But it goes, there's parking in behind Phase Two, public parking, but for off-street, 18 spots is pretty, pretty small. That was, that was mainly my thing. Dogs painting sidewalks and mixed conifer, tall mixed conifer. Not cute little stubbies. All over. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I have William Gifford signed up.
My name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. I've been watching the development of this project for almost nine years now. It's gone through a lot of changes, but I think what we have now is probably the best use we could hope for, for this land, for this property. I've been down on the riverbank, or on the, on the Cove bank there with Tony and Randy, tying ribbons around trees to save, and the environmental perspective that these developers bring is, is unparalleled. It's, it's very, very good. It's good for the environment, it's good for the economy, and I'm hoping all the, the details are not going to be getting in the way of the big picture. I mean, you guys are big picture. You're, you know, you're planning the big picture of what's good for the environment, what's good for the economy is this plan, and I'm hoping that tonight you people are going to be taking the big picture view and get this thing finally approved so we can get construction going on this. It's been very well thought out, it's been very well talked out. I like process, but I certainly would like to see some action tonight.
And how does that address the criteria that we need to consider for decision, Mr. Gifford?
I'll let you interpret that.
He's got way too much experience with that.
Yeah, he didn't give us any, so, there we go. The devil's in the details.
And the last person I have signed up is Karen Sorbell.
My name is Karen Sorbell, and I'm in unincorporated Oregon City. I used to walk down there almost three times a week, but my dog passed away, so I don't walk as often as I used to. But I was a very frequent visitor, and I love the area, so I can totally relate to the people that don't want to lose the public access. I really, I'm glad that there was some kind of provision for making the water cleaner that's been passed a long time ago that that other guy mentioned. But also, I, I had two things I want to say. Mr., I can't remember, Isla Horowitz, the builder? The builder mentioned getting it up and running tonight, I guess. But the other reason that I want to say is the ospreys. People are talking about the ospreys, and the ospreys are nesting pairs, and they are covered by the, they're protected by migratory bird laws or whatever. And so the sooner you build a platform for their, to be able to use, they will use a higher platform, I guess. This is what the fish and games say. So you have to build the higher platform so that they won't use the one where they're going to be doing construction. I don't know about this year, maybe they're not going to be using that spot, but if they're building and moving land, and so it needs to be built. And probably on the peninsula, maybe. Maybe two, because, you know, there's lots of kids around nowadays. But anyway, so that was something. And then I read in here about the moratorium. I just wanted someone to address the sewer moratorium. We're going to have a whole lot more toilets flushing, and I just was wondering what was going on with that. So that's something for future, but just an idea.
I could talk to you offline if that would help.
Sure, that's okay. I just, I just was wondering. Is that being addressed?
This area is not in the sewer moratorium, so if you're talking this specific area, but the areas that are identified, we can talk offline. I can give you an update.
So just because it's a sewer moratorium doesn't mean all sewers, just the sewers-
That's right. Our sewer moratoriums are very specific to the areas that are capacity limited.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, that helps.
Small pipes, big flushes. That's the problem.
All right. So these are going to have big flushes and big pipes?
Big pipes, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I would just clarify, I would clarify that the sewer moratorium is a piping issue in certain areas of the city.
All right. Well, thanks.
Specific areas in the city, and John can talk to you more about that.
Well, I just, because it was, I thought, you know?
Right. There's, I think, three or four areas in the city that are affected by the pipes, existing pipes.
Okay.
That are going to be replaced.
That makes me feel better about that. But osprey.
Yeah.
Go osprey. Okay. Thanks. Thank you very much.
And I guess I'd say just briefly on the sewer thing, they're about as close as you can get to the plant, so they're going to have the shortest pipes in the-
That's right.
I thought it had something to do with cleaning.
General building, yeah.
No, they're, they're right next door to the treatment plant. That is all I have as far as people signed up. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this time?
Come on down. Come on.
I don't have any other cards.
That's okay. Come on down. We'll find it.
If, if, if you've signed up, and I don't have a card, I apologize. Maybe you can fill out a card after you're done speaking.
Thank you. My name is Nick Bezarides, other half of Heidi Bezarides, who spoke earlier. I live in unincorporated Claquamas-
I live in unincorporated Clackamas County, a couple miles from the Cove, and likewise use the Cove for swimming, running, biking on the path, and would like to emphasize the special nature of this area in terms of what it represents to the people who use it. It's a quiet place right now, and while I support this development, I'm personally sorry to see the increase in bustle a little bit. I was very pleased to see tonight the non-motorized designation and what that does as far as maintaining some level of harmony between users, aquatic users in the Cove, and also just keeping it I think it's very important to go above and beyond in terms of protecting water quality, and certainly the city code does a lot in terms of requiring bio swells and traps in the storm system and that sort of thing, but I think it would be worth potentially trying to encourage the residents through behavioral activities to do everything they possibly can to maintain or increase water quality in the Cove. As a river scientist, I think I would like to echo the Watershed Basin Council fellow who spoke, that the channel may get dredged out and the river may fill it back in the next year.
It will.
And so I think it's important to consider that the developments that happen as far as aquatic use goes aren't dependent on that channel being established. And just that it's a dynamic area, and yes, they're building out of the floodplain, but nature, nature has its way of showing us who's boss, and that's important to remember. But in general, tonight sort of turned my perspective a little bit, and I'm happy to support the project. So, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. So at this time, we'll close the public testimony and take a rebuttal from the applicant, if you wish.
I really have no comments. I believe that each of the people that have spoken have very good thought, and they've had the opportunity to think it through. We have, in the past, met with several of these people. We appreciate their concerns, and we will make it an exceptional project. One of the things I think that they really have to understand is the only reason for even looking at the, a water quality change with a dredging approach is that it's not working right now. We have to get more water in there. So that's something which isn't part of this particular evening's agenda, but it has been brought up, and we want that water to be swimmable, we want it to be something everybody can get into, and we want it the way it was five years ago. So that's the long-range intent, and we've talked with several of these consultants. We actually are working with a consultant right now that is doing a lot of the lower trust funds. He's given us a critical path on how we can do that and how we can actually enhance the water. So this is a process which we will be doing in the next probably three months and get an established approach to making it continually clean. That's all the comments I have.
Are you saying you think you might have a difficult time marketing condos to a scum-filled pond with dead fish floating in it?
It's a little suspect.
Lake Oswego does quite well with that.
I just wanted to add one thing.
Don't forget just to identify yourself again.
Oh, sure, sorry. My name's Reed Stapleton, I'm a land use planner with Dow engineers. To your comment, Mrs. McGriff, about juniper, we're comfortable finding a suitable alternative to the juniper and modifying our landscape plan with our final plans to address that.
Charles and I will be very happy, and so will the public.
And perhaps you can consider some tall trees to accommodate the wildlife.
Or drop a couple telephone poles in the interim while things are growing.
Well, you know, there's that platform at the Rivers of Life Center that in the time that it's been there, it's never, ever, ever been used. I can't see that there's been any activity there, so maybe they don't like that location, but.
What, they charge you for rent?
You could have a little, build a treehouse there. They're selling quite well, I understand.
Okay, thank you very much.
Before they go, a couple of things that were brought up, if I may ask, was dealing with the wildlife. So I just quickly scanned the natural resource thing, and I know that there are osprey over there because I've seen them myself. I don't know what other species, but is there, this report talks a lot about the fish. I don't see anything, did I just miss it in the quick scan about other species and critical habitat? I mean, not habitat, but the birds, because there are birds there, I've, you know.
And otter and beaver.
Yeah. So what happens to those while you're doing construction? Because I mean, you know.
We will not be in the water.
No, no, the osprey aren't in the water, but maybe they're unsure. What about the, you know, things like otters and all that kind of stuff? Any wildlife that's around there is going to get spooked out.
Yeah, we understand there is a denning area along the peninsula, which is a.
There's five.
Shh, you can come, yeah.
So that's prominent, we certainly won't be in that area. And originally, we had talked about building over there and doing floating homes, so that was a long time ago. So the intent is to modify the plan as we've gone through to handle all these comments, which are not native, they're just giving us new insights, and we want to address them. The osprey thing, I think whoever brought up the concept of going out to the peninsula, there's a lot of tall trees out there, and to even put in platforms for them out there, that would be a perfect place for it. I find the peninsula, there's been this push to take all the invasive species out of there. I don't like the idea, and I've even talked with our major plant guy here, and he doesn't agree with me, but I don't like the idea of people just going down there and tearing it up. I would rather see it be pristine the way it is, and even though it's an invasive species, lock it off right there and make it so it's an area that is kept more safe, the path can go down the middle and go that way. So that's kind of out of character with most of the projects we've ever done, but I've been out there many, many times, and I've been offered beers at eight in the morning for people that are camping out there.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I hate to see that. I would like to do good signage, I'd like to even potentially do some fencing out there. That would be on the next round of presentations to you when we do Phase Two.
Yeah, well, you know, there's, like you say, beers, so there's garbage, and, you know, I don't mean to pick on people that have the unfortunate habit of smoking, but, you know, there's that litter that's always in places that you don't really want to see it.
One of the other comments that was made about is there going to be a free area for dogs to run? The Oregon City, the Tri-City Plant has several acres which aren't into production for probably 30 to 50 years. That's a big area right behind the Agnes Street towards 205. I originally talked to them about making that the open space in perpetuity for that same concept. They have not agreed to that, but I have talked with them recently, and they don't have, you know, future plans for a long time for that property, so there will be a nice area there. And then there's another, two other sites that are probably a total of three acres that are the old buildings that are there. Originally, when we brought this project forward, the city manager at the time said that he would like to condemn those two buildings, and we make that an open space. So there's some real opportunities there, and it might be something that we'll discuss in a future meeting.
Are dogs going to be allowed in the apartment complex?
Certain-sized dogs. We've done any number of projects where we allow dogs.
Yeah, I don't want anybody to get the impression that I don't like dogs, but dogs and wildlife don't always go together. And there are people who are responsible and keep their pets on leash, and then there are people who are not so much, and they let their dog sort of, not, it's not.
Not dogs, it's cats.
Yeah.
Cats are.
Yes, cats are not so good for wildlife either.
We did a 100-acre project on the Oregon coast, right on the ocean, and we actually put restrictions for cats had to be on a leash, because they would go right into a 35-acre preserve that we had there, through wetlands.
Ground nesting.
And they just, I mean, they just.
Tear it up.
Tear it up.
Yep, I'm with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So do we have any questions for staff at this time?
Do you want to close?
I just have final comments.
I didn't say anything in here about.
Let's close the public.
Close the public here, and we can go to discussion. We have a motion?
Could you, sorry, there was a couple of questions that I actually had for the lovely and delightful John Ruplinger about traffic, since that's one of our favorite topics that nobody's brought it up just yet. So if you could reopen that so I can ask him some questions about traffic and traffic mitigation?
Please come forward.
Since he's our staff.
If we're going to take new testimony, we may have to allow folks to respond to new testimony?
It's stuff that's already in here, I just wanted him to clarify.
Okay.
So in your, you know, report, you indicated that you don't see any issues with any traffic that would be generated from this. Obviously, you know, there is a bus stop nearby, but it's not super, super close, so I would presume most people that are going to live here are going to have cars. So could you just?
Yes, we'd rather expect people to have cars. The important thing is that the traffic analysis that was done originally in 2008 was used as the basis for the original approval. This current proposal has, as at least one of you commissioners pointed out, a few more apartment units than did the prior. So the net increment of change between this and the prior approval is fairly small. So there will be some, certainly some, a slight greater impact than there was before. Now, of course, it's also important to remember that we have changed with the adoption of our TSP, Transportation System Plan, the basis for evaluating our traffic operations. We've now based it on the volume-to-capacity ratio rather than the level of service. What the applicant did was to analyze the five or six most impacted intersections as evaluated in 2008, and we had them update the traffic analysis. And in terms of the approval criteria, the traffic operations from this development meet the applicable criteria in terms of traffic operations at the key intersections. So there is a minor increment, but it meets all of the operational standards.
And that's, you're just talking about it from that phase. I guess part of what I was looking for, and maybe it's here, we've got the overall development plan that's going to call for a lot more, well, it's going to increase volume, it's going to increase more trips. And I guess I'm wondering, so you're looking at this one, this one, and this one, so what does that end up equaling at the end, generally?
Well, what it translates into is that the amount of traffic that is added to the system at the, at the build-out year will meet, according to the calculations, the performance standards that we have adopted as a city.
And that's all the phases? That's what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought you were saying.
Yes.
Yep, thank you. That's just, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. I'm prepared to make a motion, or do you have to close that?
Mr. Espie has some discussion he'd like to have, so please don't jump in.
We can take the motion first and go to discussion after that.
I'd rather have the discussion first.
You want to have the discussion first?
Okay.
We can do that?
Go for it, Paul.
Okay, well, just some quick stuff. Hopefully, these can be brought in as conditions of approval if they're not in there already. I didn't see them, but with regards to the amphitheater, I just want to make sure that there's drainage infrastructure that's incorporated into that, so it doesn't just fill up with water during the winter time, it drains adequately. I think that the, I would emphasize the native planting vegetation for that area, minimize the amount of lawn and any kind of phosphorus-dependent types of vegetation that would drain into the pool, drain into Clackamas Cove and cause it to, you know, have overloaded with phosphorus. Boat slips need to be located in a place that facilitates triathlon swimming routes and sail racing. I sometimes sail race, I always come in dead last, but nonetheless, I think that that would probably be a really great place to have, to race leados and other kinds of small-class sailboats there. So the docks should be strategically placed in order to facilitate those kinds of activities.
Or at least not inhibit.
Right. I should be able to walk down with my paddleboard on the sidewalk and maybe set it out on a little beach and hang out there and go paddleboarding. I don't know how you put that in a condition, but I'm hoping that that is going, that the design of this plan is going to facilitate that kind of vibe down there. Tall trees, I agree. I think that they really do need to be there in order to enhance habitat. I agree with Denise's comments about reading, getting rid of the junipers and replacing those with western red cedars or other types of native conifer trees.
Don't forget to add Charles.
Absolutely. Open space, make sure there's enough open space, and it looks like there is. Building articulation and spacing. I think that there were some conditions of approval that dealt with the building articulation because some of those, some of those elevations were extremely flat and massive. I saw a lot of stylized drawings with the buildings, the way they looked, and I hope that they will look at least as good or better. I think the roof pitch should be a little bit higher. I'm not sure if this is part of the plan, but I would like to see buildings that do have good architectural detail and styling and a variation of type, of integrated materials. And that is pretty much it for me.
Can you amend that condition that, that they have agreed to, that the landscape plan will be modified to eliminate any use of juniper?
We can work on some language for you.
I mean, it could be very simple, because they said they were going to do it, I just want it in stone.
Or not in wood?
No, not in wood.
Zach?
Not a whole lot to add. I think Paul had a lot of good comments, agreed, emphasis on native plants, tall trees, conifers, getting rid of the juniper. Otherwise, I think we hit a lot of good points that we reiterated by the public. Yeah, I'm prepared to support this. I think it's, as Mr. Gifford said, it's good for the environment, it's good for the economy.
Robert?
Well, I think as long as the public has access to the Cove, that I support, support the project as designed, I think it's going to add a lot to the city in terms of growth off-site. It's going to have a real impact in terms of the quality of development that we get at that north end of the city. And other than that, I think the comments that the developers made and respondents and the planning commissioner on point, and I support the project.
Tom?
I can say that after seven-some years, it's been thoroughly vetted by so many committees in the city and the comments that we had tonight from the citizens as well as from the developers, and everything that our, our planning commission has added to it for additional comments. I really don't want to add any more than what's already been said.
Denise?
Well, I think that, that one of the things that I appreciate about this commission is that there are certain things that we all, over time, have tended to agree with, and I, and I really think that, that we've hit a lot of points that we are, we have in common with one another. I'm not saying I have any in addition, but I agree with Paul, what you said about the building articulation. I made a comment, I think, last time, that I'm hoping this has more of a northwest feel as opposed to, you know, well, could be anywhere.
A southwest feel.
A southwest feel. I know one project we saw years ago had a tiled roof, which, you know, doesn't do well in this country. And I think what I heard a lot from the community is that there needs to be a balance between a really finished, hard-look edge versus the natural. You know, we've got wild and sort of unruly right now, but where's that balance in between so that everything isn't carved and finished and it doesn't look like it was natural? And I know many of you know that that Cove is not a natural feature, that it
And I know many of you know that that cove is not a natural feature, that it was created that way by a former citizen here of our community. And I think that if Jean Elliott was here today, she's the one that actually won the contest to name the cove, it was not always called, it was called Parker's Lagoon when I moved here. For those of you that have been here for a while, and Jean came up with that name and we replaced it on all of our documents. So I think that, Paul, your comment about grass, I, I think I would agree, I'm not sure how grass and the, and the edge of the river really work together, because I know what you have to do to keep grass going. Open space, I think, again, we heard from the community, and I think it shows in here that there's going to be open space. The, I just, I looked again at the construction management plan, and while, again, there, it looks really good, and there's lots of provisions for fencing and things of that sort, I had a concern earlier that I said, all of that that's been going on, that's not, well, nothing's been going on since the cement plant left, and I know how noisy it was down there when the cement plant was there, and somehow the wildlife seemed to be able to survive because it was on the opposite side of the road, but it's been quiet for many years, has been, as was testified. So how do we make that balance between all the commotion that's gonna be going on there and all the little critters, whatever they may be besides the fish, that are gonna have, are gonna try to live there, and where do they go? And how do we help minimize, how does the construction help minimize that impact to them, even though you're not near, but it's just the residual noise that happens that goes on?
Muffin, hammer.
Yeah, you know, things are going on that they're not used to. I think that, I appreciate the fact that the phasing plan has changed, because I think originally it looked like it was just a little too ambitious, and there was just too much gonna be happening all at once that I couldn't figure out how all the pieces were coming together, but I think at least this first phase is something that you can wrap your arms around, and it's a little more manageable in terms of what it's going to be and how it's going to be, rather than sort of everything, you know, happening all at once. So that's just my comment, I think they've addressed the concerns, some of the concerns that we've had, and I guess, you know, we'll be looking to our staff to make sure everything else is on, all okay.
Damon?
Yeah, I think just as a general comment, a lot of things that we've heard and said here are really more about Phase Two than Phase One. Doesn't mean that they're not valid, and it doesn't mean that we're not gonna keep paying attention to them, because they're now on the record, so when Phase Two comes, they'll, they'll happen. The, I guess one quick question I have for staff, which would be, all right, on condition four, you know, prior to the issuance of a permit, the revised plan for retaining well between subject site and the adjacent property, I think we should identify the adjacent property, just even if it's just, you know, OCSC, so we know it's the shopping center versus any other potential lots that are around. A lot of these are broken up into separate tax lots, and so that way we know the adjacent property.
Which adjacent property, yeah.
The, I, I've pretty much been involved in this from day one, because I was on the city commission when it all started, and I have to say that the original plan was greatly ambitious with like houseboats and water skiing, surfing centers, it was like, it was...
Too much.
Well, I don't know, it's all stuff that I wouldn't mind doing, but the fact of the matter is, is what happened is, the developer listened to the concerns and questions and modified his plans significantly, and I'm finding, you know, every time I turn around and ask a question, they've either got an answer or they'll, they'll make the fix, like the junipers, okay, we'll get rid of the junipers, it's not the, you know, it's like, so from that aspect, I have a lot of confidence in this plan, and at least with, with this first section, and I know when we get to Phase Two, there'll be a lot more, you know, what's the drainage, what's the, the, but the one thing about the, the wildlife and the water quality that does deal with what's being proposed right now is the ten thousand-plus dump trucks that are gonna come out of the North Park when you're, when you're doing your dredge out of there. So, and ten thousand dump trucks is a lot.
Yeah.
So if there could be something done to, you know, and this is, you know, what you gotta do, it's you gotta do, as long as, but, you know, to say it's gonna happen, you know, between ten and two, or, you know, whatever it is, to, so it isn't twelve constant hours, you know, seven days a week of trucks going, 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 going. You know, as you get further and further away from the peninsula, you get into less and less natural territory, and the noise isn't as big an issue, I think. You know, the wildlife adapted to the noise, they'll adapt to the noise, and they'll adapt to the quiet when it comes. Everything else has kind of been said about ospreys and otters and beaver and all that, so I'm not gonna worry too much about it, but that initial dredge or digout of the, the North Park is probably gonna be the single biggest impact that the whole site is gonna have on, on, yeah, on the wildlife, so.
Believe it or not, my next-door neighbor used to have a koi pond, and we saw osprey in their, her backyard, but they ate all of the koi, so.
Same with the blue heron.
Yeah, so.
The backyard pond is just a raccoon fishing hole.
Yeah.
So, anyway, other than that, I think everything else has been discussed, and I'm prepared to support this phase of the plan.
Okay, great. I, I really, I think the comments by the commission has been great, I, I would agree with everything that's been said by all of the other commissioners. You know, I, I look back at this area when I first moved to Oregon City in nineteen seventy-seven, and my first drive around from the Oregon City Shopping Center behind the Oregon City Shopping Center down Main Street, I, I couldn't believe.
Did you go on Agnes Avenue?
I, I just looped around behind...
Oh, looped around.
Down Firestone Alley and around.
And went down, and, and that led to downtown Oregon City, and I'm thinking, this is the armpit of Oregon City. I couldn't believe it. Willamette Western had their...
Cement plant?
Cement.
Batch plant down there, and it was dusty and dirty, and it was just a nasty place. It was, it was the place you kind of wanted to avoid having to go by at that time, there was nothing attractive about it. And the area that we're affectionately calling the Cove was dirty and mucky, and they, they were dredging in there, and there was nothing attractive about it at all. And I remember at the time, as an architect, I looked at that and I saw tremendous potential, and I thought, wow, what a, what an amazing lost opportunity this is, it's just like, right here at this location, what could be done? And it was just like a completely underutilized at that location to have a concrete batch plant there, and it continued on, turned into Lone Star, and, and went on and on and on, and...
Into Glacier, yeah.
And Glacier eventually took it.
Was the Agnes Baby Home still operating when you moved here?
And I, I, I took my dog for a walk down there, and I thought, this is like the least attractive place I could ever take my dog for a walk, and that was the last time I took my dog for a walk down there. So I applaud the, the development plans here. The only concern that I have, and I, I talked a little bit with Paul before we got going with the hearing, is, as Damon mentioned, we're talking about ten thousand dump truck loads of dirt being removed from the area that's identified as the amphitheater and swapping that for the apartment, garden apartment site. And I, I would really like to see the developer put an emphasis on that area being finished out and not just left as a, a hole in the ground. I think it'd be a tragedy to have a nice new apartment development over here and a big hole in the ground over there. So I, I don't know how the, the phasing will all sequence out, but I, I think it'd be a tragedy not to have that all finished out, because that is gonna be a major public amenity for this project and, and for the city of Oregon City. So I, I think finishing out that North Park is a key component to making this area a really asset to the development.
At the very least, leaving it as a raw...
Exactly, not leave it as just a raw place.
No fertilizer, you don't want...
So, that would be the only thing I would add to the other comments that the commissioners have made, and at this time, I, I would entertain a motion.
Can we ask Laura just quickly, because like, your, your comment is totally spot-on, and that's in Phase Two?
Phase Two, yes.
So at this point, in the North Park, there would include...
It's only the ten thousand one hundred dump truck loads.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I saw that.
So then, the area is proposed to be hydroceded?
Okay.
And then Phase Two, which would start in twenty sixteen, would include the permanent facilities for the North Park.
Would that address your...
So it's a temporary...
As long as that's part of the...
With hydroceding?
It's part of the development plan, and it's not an afterthought.
Yeah.
Is that gonna be like a keep-out area?
I think so.
I mean, will people be able to go to, when it's hydroceded, I mean, I know it'll look like green foam on it, but...
The, the temporary path that they're adjusting will go through that area.
Through there, okay, all right.
Yeah, they'll scoot it around, so then they can do the grading.
We also have a change.
So I, I'd like to entertain a motion.
If we could just clarify what we, what we've heard.
Okay.
Okay. We heard about drainage in the amphitheater, and I think Condition Thirty-two deals with addressing the drainage alcohol from the amphitheater area of the North Park site.
Yeah.
Is that right, Laura?
That is correct?
Everybody in agreement on that one?
Yep.
Minimize lawn, I think that would be a detailed design review question for Phase Two.
Yes.
In agreement on that one?
Sure.
Will they agree a note somewhere that we don't forget about it?
Yes, Laura will have it.
Yes, Laura, we'll keep a log. Boat slips, boat slip location, I think will be a design, a detailed design review question for that phase.
It should be, yeah.
Paddle boarding?
Kind of, non-secular.
Seems like a Phase Two or a detail, or a location of the boat slips question?
Making sure that there is access, water access is the main thing from the, from the promenade, I think is really...
And that would be a Phase Two issue.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Tall trees shall be, should be retained or encouraged, and no juniper, junipers. I'm suggesting that Condition Six deals with landscaping. Subsection C...
So, it, it deals with landscaping, but doesn't get specis...
I, I'm...
Oh, you're getting there, okay, all right.
Subsection C says that you have to, all landscaping trees shall be a minimum of two-inch, a minimum caliper each. I was thinking of a sentence, taller trees shall be encouraged, or the planting of taller trees shall be encouraged.
Encouraged, yeah.
I don't know if I like the encouraged part.
I don't know that we can require it.
Also, I wanted to remind the commission that, as you saw in your staff report, there was a previously approved tree protection plan in two thousand eight, and so we did review their proposal with the tree protection plan to make sure that it matched, and it does. So they're protecting the trees that were identified for protection in the beginning.
Which we didn't talk about.
And I guess is, the question is, are you talking species of trees that get tall? Because our code, our code specifies what type of mitigation tree is put in.
Yeah, well, one and a, one...
Two-inch.
Two-inch caliper is pretty...
Well, but that's what, that's what the code says.
I, I understand.
So are we looking for species that get tall over time?
Right, western red, or...
Right. And, and I'm fine with the word encouraged, because the developer's already indicated that, that he's willing to accommodate that.
Besides putting in bigger trees is less mitigation.
Yeah, right, and...
Six-inch tree is like twenty less two-inch trees.
So it's identified in the conditions to, for the mitigation trees, if they want to plant fewer, they could plant bigger as well, so there's the option in there for them?
And then the no juniper could either go at the end, after the planting of taller trees shall be encouraged, no juniper shall be planted, could be there, or I guess it could be after subsection G, whatever you think, Laura?
Either way.
Either place.
Okay, also on the list, building articulation, I think that's addressed on...
There's condition in there.
Condition Two D.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um...
Do you have access?
That's right here.
Um, I am, I think we're fine with, Commissioner Mayby made a comment about clarifying, oh, Condition Four, adding adjacent Oregon City Shopping Center property.
I have a, the tax ID number if you wanna add it. If you want to change condition of four to say, prior to the issuance of any permit associated with the proposed development, the applicant shall submit revised plans for the retaining well between Lot Two and Clackamas County Map Two, Two E, Twenty-nine, Tax Lot Eighteen Hundred.
Just say Oregon City Shopping Center.
Yeah, just put OCSD.
Most people aren't gonna look up the township range in section, either, either put them both or one or the other, because it's, you know, we know what it is, but somebody else isn't gonna know what that is.
Yeah.
Oregon City Steel District?
Shopping Center.
Okay.
That's what I have on the list.
Okay.
So how does...
Oh, and the amendments that Laura proposed when we started.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
How does Condition Two D get to Paul's concern about building articulation?
It says right there, building articulation and modulation.
D.
D.
So there's a requirement in seventeen sixty-two oh five seven, which requires that every thirty feet that there be some type of...
Change.
There's a list of four things, you need three of them, so one of them is top, middle, bottom, one of them is horizontal articulation, one is vertical, and one is repeating patterned windows.
Yeah.
Those are the four, so every thirty feet.
Motion?
So, we have proposed changes to the condition of approval, are all the commissioners in agreement with those?
Yes.
Yes. Did you have something, Damon?
I just wanted to, just really quickly, the only thing we're really changing then is, or since the hearing is, four, to add Oregon City Shopping Center.
And juniper.
And then, six, yeah, six, by adding encouraging tall trees and discouraging junipers. That's, that's the only, everything else we found or agreed were in a different phase.
I don't, I don't wanna discourage...
No, I understand, I shorthanded it.
Yeah, okay, I want to prohibit it.
Everybody knows.
Okay, so we're in agreement, do we have a, a motion?
I forgot what I was gonna move.
I recommend approval of the Cove Concept Development Plan, File CP fifteen oh one, DP fifteen oh one, NR fifteen oh five, and US fifteen oh six.
Second.
Okay, I'll second.
Shouldn't it say as amended?
As amended.
That's what I was gonna say, but I forgot, it's long.
All right, Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Giles?
Okay, aye.
Chair Kidmore?
Aye.
Motion passes.
It's only been a decade.
Yeah, decade.
Are you, are you sure the Baby Home wasn't still operating when you moved here? Because when I came, no, seriously, when I came, the Agnes Baby Home, which was on Agnes Avenue.
And we still have one more item on the...
We know, we're gonna let them go away. It was still open when I came in, this is in seventy-three. Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, you have communications voice now.
I was fascinated with the building, and I made my husband take me down there.
I'm glad we didn't have to...
Okay. Hey, everybody, we still have one more public hearing, so out on the door, pour the water.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome to listen if you want, but to your conversation.
It's an exciting topic, believe me, you'll all wanna stay.
Okay, so we have one more item on our agenda, which is the revised heritage tree ordinance.
I'm sorry, I'm not getting your joke.
PC fifteen two forty. Who's talking to us?
So at our, at our last planning commission meeting, we brought forward the heritage tree revisions that were proposed and reviewed by the Natural Resources, or, yeah, am I right? Yes, Natural Resources Committee. In the packet, we provided the current code as well. In the packet, we provided the current code, as well as the proposed code, as requested. A lot of the conversation at the last meeting seemed to deal with incentivizing the program, which I think is duly noted. I think it's a little bit of a different conversation than the code itself. I think that as we get into budgeting, or looking at those opportunities that, that may exist for funding, whether it be through grants, mitigation tree fund, or others, is probably the appropriate, in my, in my opinion, the appropriate time to have those discussions. Could certainly, trying to, trying to separate the two, because I think they're two distinct discussion items.
The only thing I thought to that being is, when we send a recommendation forward, do we send that we strongly recommend that there be some form of, you know, but it's not part of the act, it's part of our cover letter. But it, I, it's clearly not part of the program, because it can't be, we don't control the budget.
So where are we at? Do we have a revised ordinance?
So we had just, I think, the last time, I think that folks wanted to see what was existing versus what was proposed. So we provided both of those.
Okay.
We did not make any changes to the proposed new language.
So the draft we saw last time.
You did, just very briefly, there's one little change.
I think there was one small thing.
Yeah, I had suggested to Pete that where it says tree eligibility based on size, rather than have the species first, he changed to have the common name first. Most people know the common name of something, they won't be able to tell you that it's a jugap-
Should have succumbent.
C, C, yeah. And so he just made that, it's the same thing, it just, he just made that one little switch. I just thought it-
And it did add inches on-
Inches, yeah.
That was missing.
Okay, so are we prepared to make a motion to approve this?
I think Commissioner Espy didn't have an opportunity to weigh in on this, because he was-
I probably have to take a powder on this, because I didn't read the material, so I will abstain.
So I, I, I put, went on the record saying we were going to, we should wait till you came back, so you could take a look at it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, you were busy, that's okay.
We had the other questions, the whole change was-
We had multiple requests to continue anyway.
Yeah.
So do we have a motion to approve this?
I'll make the motion.
Hey, I get to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, the, do I need to go by number, or anything?
You could just say-
Revised heritage tree ordinance.
That'll work.
I will second it.
So then we're going to, is it something that we want to have, is we want to have a little cover with this, basically, talking about what you mentioned about-
Yeah, I just think that as it goes forward, because it needs to be adopted by the-
City Commission.
City Commission, that, you know, the Planning Commission sees this as being-
The first step.
Yeah.
In a process.
Useless without some encouragement from the private, for the private sector.
Right, so I, I would suggest that the, the comments that we made last time be passed on to the City Council, as far, as far as the-
I'd come and talk, but I work on Wednesdays, so.
Would it be okay if we asked for just a, a sort of a draft memo to be circulated to us before it goes to the City Commission? I mean, we, everyone will take responsibility for reading it, making sure that it's what we want it to say. I think everybody's saying yes.
Okay, we can, we can work on that.
You know, and-
I don't think it's necessary for me to be comfortable with what you're saying.
If, if you want to do that, one, one thing that seems like it's been working really well with Laura is to send out the poll, and everybody can respond to the poll.
That's, yeah, well, we respond.
Maybe if she sent us a draft of the memo, and we could just say, looks okay.
That's what I just said, that if the memo's drafted, we would all take responsibility for getting back to her in a timely manner.
She could use that, that mechanism that she's been using, just to send out a poll to all of us.
I don't know if you can use a doodle poll for that type of a thing. A doodle poll's asking you whether you can attend something.
Well, she can use it for anything she wants.
She'll create her own doodle poll, it'll be a Laura poll.
She's got the power. So, we have a motion?
Second.
A second.
I would support that, as long as we have the, if the motion is including that we would send a cover memo.
Yes.
Yes.
Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. The first and second are said that the cover memo is part of the motion.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Hankins?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Have a stand.
Commissioner Maybe?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye, as amended.
Commissioner Guy?
And aye.
And Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, Tony, do we have any communications?
Not that I can think of right off the top of my head, so, no.
That's okay.
Not tonight, I guess I can answer any questions if anybody has any.
I actually have one, that unfortunately, we lost another heritage tree that had been designated-
No kidding.
-at the corner of Fifth and Jefferson. It, uh-
Oh, went over.
No, it didn't blow over, it got split in the storm, and-
That was a great tree.
Yeah, it was a-
Big, big red maple.
Yeah.
Yeah. That thing was awesome.
And so we've lost, you know, we've lost yet another one. I, I don't know if this is a bad sign, that once you get your tree designated as a heritage tree, something bad happens to it.
Think twice about-
In Lake Oswego, we wrapped them in raw silk, and it had little crystals on them.
Do you, and we go home?
Yes.
And, you know, I think the one thing we did run into a little bit there was, you know, we don't have an emergency process, so we did have to make a call there, we did go out and look at that tree. A pretty significant limb came off of that, that exposed considerable rot in the middle of that tree.
Yeah.
And with the storm that was, we were in the middle of, there, there was concern about that tree failing.
Because the tree can stand on one quarter of its wood.
So how do they get designated without an arborist report saying that it had problems?
I'd have to go back and look at the arborist report, I don't know, I mean, from the outside, without seeing the interior trunk, which we do see regularly.
Sure, sure.
It looked very healthy, I'm assuming, I, I can't answer that. But once you did see, you know, once that limb came off, and we've seen that quite a bit in a lot of the trees down in Clackamas Park, once you lose a portion of it, you realize the amount of, of a very healthy-looking tree that has, you know, 50%, 60-plus percent rot inside. Doesn't mean that they could potentially stay up longer, but they obviously do become a hazard pretty quickly at that point.
The, the truth of the matter is, all trees age and die at some point. Every, every tree has a life cycle. Some of them last hundreds of years, and some only decades.
You mean like sequoias?
But they all eventually die.
It wasn't a heritage tree, but we lost them.
Arborists called those time bombs.
And the tree came down, blocked the road.
So, anything else?
Time bombs.
I also have, I have some other news.
You do?
Yeah, I just received correspondence earlier in the, last week, that the entire congressional delegation, with the exception unfortunately of Congressman Walden, sent a letter to the President asking for an appropriation in the budget for the work that needs to be done at the Willamette Falls Locks, which is, you know, our companion site to the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. So I was really very, very pleased to see that everybody had, had signed off on that. Now, it's interesting to note, I didn't, just as a five-second thing, I, when I was in Washington DC the first week in November, I visited every member of the congressional delegation, except for Blumenauer, because I had seen him at his awards ceremony prior to that day, on the 5th of November. And they were all very supportive of the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, which I brought up, and I also talked, of course, coupled that with the heritage area and the locks. So I was, that's why I said I was very pleased to see this letter, and I was very pleased to see that Congressman Walden supported the, our project, even though it's not in any way related to his district, but I think in the long term, it does bode well for the health of Oregon, and that Willamette Falls Legacy Project really does have an effect